All right, it's 6:30, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. We got a lot to get through tonight, so we're gonna try and be efficient with time. So, thank you to everybody, especially the organizing committee for putting this together. We really appreciate everything you've done in order to make this happen for the community. Thank you to all the candidates for putting your names forward. We appreciate you being willing to step up for the community. So I'll just go over a quick, brief set of rules here on how we're gonna kinda operate tonight. We did send out to the community a request to give us questions ahead of time. We got a lot, so we're gonna try and make our way through. We will try and address them all. I can't guarantee that's gonna happen. I've tried to group some together to make it a little bit more efficient, so hopefully we can get the answers that everybody's looking for tonight. So we're gonna start off with our mayoral candidates. They're gonna get two minutes to do their opening remarks. Each of them will get two minutes, and then we will move into a Q&amp;A portion for questions that were specifically submitted for the mayoral candidates, and we'll start with that. And then at the end of that, they will get two minutes for closing remarks. We will operate on the same timeline for councillors and for the MD councillors as well. So, tonight, like I said, all of the questions were pre-submitted. I did tweak them a little bit to ensure that they were respectful, fair, and focused on community issues. So, that was my prerogative as the moderator. So thank you again to our candidates in the audience, and I just wanna make sure that tonight is respectful. We're here to get some good answers, so keep that in mind. So, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our two mayoral candidates. So Alfred, Andy Prokop.[95.72][95.72](APPLAUSE) So we're gonna do this in first-name alphabetical order, so Alf, you're up.
Happy to go first. Thank you. Yeah, so it says Alfred, but my name is actually, I go by Alf, which is the acronym for the Alberta Life Forum, and I'm pleased and delighted to be here tonight, and delighted to be candidate for the Mayor of Tabor. It's been something that I've been considering for a while. If you look on my Facebook page, you'll see a little bit of history of my involvement with the Tabor Town Council, and some of the things that happened there, and maybe the reason that I'm back tonight. So, just as an opening statement, not everybody knows who I am. I've been living in Alberta for 55 years, and I'm married to Melanie for 50 of those years, and we've got six children that live in various parts of Alberta, and then a bunch of progeny past that as well, so very much a family man. I'm a very conservative type of fellow, conservative family man, and those are the principles that I live my life by. Considering the mayor, the race for mayor, you see me sitting down at the corner of 50 and 50 there. I call that the corner of good governance and efficient leadership. And I've had people come and stop in there and have a chat with me and ask me questions, and one of those questions is, what are your qualifications to be mayor? And that question presumes that you must have qualifications to be the mayor. And I think I bring a rich history, a work, working career, and particularly in management, running organizations, building organizations, bringing strength to organizations, bringing teamwork into organizations, and I've done that for 45 years. It's all been involved in policing, so I hope you like the cops. But that, it's a great training ground, you know, for management, when you're in the management level of that. It's very challenging work and interesting work, and so I bring that with me. I operate on the principles of everything, all my decisions are based on some principles here: legal, ethical, cost-effective, transparent, and necessary. That's the way I operate, that's the way I'd operate as the-
Okay, that's time. Well, the clock's right there.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, sir. Andy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jared. And appreciate everybody being here tonight. And sorry, I'm running a little bit late, some family scenarios happened today, as you know, things happen, but however, getting into this here, some of my background, grew up in Lethbridge, went, had all my schooling in Lethbridge, graduated Lethbridge College, graduated the criminal justice system back in 1983. I came to Tabor for the job with the Tabor Police Service, and spent 24 years with the Tabor Police Service, retired with the Tabor Police Service in 2007. Since then, I've had a variety of jobs as well, including the irrigation field, and I'm no electrician, but I worked in the electoral piece with the irrigation field. I learned a lot in that regard as well. I spent four years at Canadian Tire as the automotive manager, another great experience. Onto the council involvement, 2013, first elected as a councillor, Tabor Town Council, three and a half years as council member, six months as interim mayor. I was elected as mayor in 2017, re-elected as mayor in 2021. Present date, 12 years on council, with Tabor Town Council, and eight and a half years as your mayor. Proud to be your mayor. My actual platform centers around economic development, has been the last three terms, recreational responsibilities, or, sorry, recreational opportunities rather, and fiscal responsibility. I was very proud and fortunate to be part of three very proactive councils. And I have to say honestly, this current council is the best council, in my opinion. I don't think other council members are here tonight would disagree. I hope not, anyway. So, boy, that two minutes goes by quick. I have a whole lot more to say, but I guess we're done at the moment.
That's time. Thank you, sir. So, we're already ahead of schedule, which is great. That means I get to ask you more questions. So, we're gonna, we're gonna start off, you will get two minutes to respond to each one of these. Don't feel like you have to use that time up, we got lots to get through, so, short and sweet. So the first one, this actually came up numerous times, it was submitted several times, and it was posed mostly as a yes-or-no question, but feel free to elaborate. Do you agree that Alberta should remain in Canada? And we'll start in the same order.
Okay, thanks, that's a great question, I like that question. I've done a lot of thinking about it, I'm sure everybody in the room has, because it's very topical right now. I believe that Confederation is somewhat in the way of, not just our province, or our region of the country, but across the country, just the way things have been set up through that document and that process of, and the concept of Confederation. It's been not very fair, not equitable for the province of Alberta. So, I'm anxious to see what the propositions are going to be, if there's, and that's when I'll make up my mind, and I think that goes for everybody here. I mean, part of Canada, that's, you know, I mean, I've had a uniform on in hostile territory and been shot at for this country. And so, you know, it comes from the heart. My dad, you know, served in the war as well, and, you know, the country means a lot to me, and, you know, that experience left a very indelible impression on me, and, you know, to the point where I get quite emotional about it. But, do we remain in Canada, do we not? It's going to simply come down to quality of life at the end of the day, and the ability to survive as, not only as a province, but as individual communities, and I'm anxious to see what they're gonna come up with. They got a lot of challenges, and I think the current path that we're on is not trending in the right direction just now, but I'm hopeful that it will, and that we'll get some people in there that have some common sense, and that can realize that this is nationhood, and not just special interest groups, and built for the elites, so I won't drone out about that. Andy.
Hold on one second. So was that yes or no?
Oh, I'm not giving you that. No, 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 I explained myself. I'm waiting to get my yes and no when the evidence is in. There's not enough evidence right now.
Fair enough. Andy.
All right, thank you, Jared. Same question exactly, correct? Thank you. All right. So, yes, Alf, you know what, I agree with the vast majority of what you had to say there, and I was actually interviewed early on, back in April, at the, it was a V-Day, the 80th anniversary, correct? That was going on at the Senate half, you were there also, I believe, as well as a number of others, and a Calgary reporter showed up to cover that. So, I think at the time, Alf, if I remember, and/or Jared, that was pretty fresh then, correct? So, this Calgary reporter, fair reporter, asked fair questions, asked me if I would be interviewed, or could be interviewed about that very question. So, I did, I granted the interview, I did the interview, and seeing that, I had about 30 seconds to think about it, and it's, like I said, it was, I don't know, maybe a week out there, a week old. So, even at that time, I said, you know, there's so much involved, there's so much history in Canada, I don't know how we would ever separate from Canada. Again, that's only a week into it. Again, I said, don't have all the information, I believe I said, and even to the state, as Alf also indicated, all that information isn't out there, it's a big decision to be made. But, I can always say, with everything that's on the table right now, I say yes, the state party of Canada, I do. And I said that then, and right now, I could change my mind, honestly, like Alf is right, the decision is not to be made yesterday, tomorrow, next week, but some, at some point it's gonna come out. So at this stage, I just definitely say yes, but you gotta be open-minded, depending on what else comes out on the table, I guess never say never, but at this stage for me, I absolutely say yes, I do.
Thank you. So, the next question that was posed to us is, both of your signs indicate strong leadership as well as honesty and integrity as part of your core values. What would, what have you done in the past to portray these qualities? And we'll switch the order up, so Andy.
Oh, sorry, I get to start, all right. Switching up on me, changed the rules. Could you ask that question again, if you would, please?
So, both of your signs indicate strong leadership as well as honesty and integrity. What have you done in the past to portray these qualities?
You know, Jared, that is a really good question, but, and I'm not one for blowing my own horn. Election time, campaign time, means you gotta blow your own horn to try to sell yourself, sell the sell. But, for me, Jared, I live it, I live that. I do that, daily, in one form or another. And, you know, Alf also, Alf's got some great qualities too, and honestly, I think, we got the same background, policing background, you know, very similar background. Alf and I have worked together over the years, worked together on council, geez, we got a lot of similarities, Alf. You know, the more I think about that, there's a lot of similarities with you and I. But it's true, we can have fun with it, but it's true. And, as I say, all the strong leadership qualities are, I think maybe, maybe anything authoritative roles, I chose policing as my career, Alf chose policing as his career. Anybody in the policing world has those qualities, they do. And without that, you don't survive, you don't make it. And, yeah, some of that can be learned, trained, et cetera, but if you don't have it to start with, you're not likely to ever have it entirely, right? So, that's the best I can answer, honestly, Jared, but I can tell you one thing, you know, they talk about, I don't know, it's a little bit negative to say, but there's only two guarantees in life, death and taxes, kinda negative, right? But there's truth to that, but I can guarantee you one thing, whatever happens tonight, or whatever happens out of this election, I guarantee you one thing, there's gonna be an ex-copper at the helm.
Alf, overdue. So if we just, yeah, reset the clock, all right?
So what have I done in the past to prove strong leadership qualities? I guess, I lost a job once, because I wouldn't compromise my principles, and I talked about them a little bit earlier, before the rude guy cut me off back there, but I got, you know, I talk about, I talk about my principles of leadership, and they're, it's, my principles are, it's gotta be legal, it's gotta be ethical, it's gotta be cost-effective, it's gotta be transparency involved, and it's gotta be necessary. And those five principles, applied to the decision-making matrix, if you will, have been successful for me in the past. I was, and this is very, very, no adversarial going on here at all, it's amazing, but anyway, the, blow your own horn. So, I was awarded the Order of Merit of the Police Services for work that I had done in the field of policing, and it was for building and leadership, and I also received the Alberta Achievement Award from Premier Stelmack, if we remember him, back in the day when we were just in the beginning of the victim service world. I was involved heavily with that, in my role as a police chief, and actually writing the legislation that we have today, and that's, so, you know, those are things that I've done in the past, and it's not that I set out to do them, they just come natural to me after, you know, that's the way you live your life, you have your own personal credo, and you live your life that way. And, but then I was able to reduce it down to my five little principles that, you know, when you put your mind to it, how is this working, and that's how it's working for me, just sticking to those principles. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So the next question that was posed to us was, are you a proponent of shopping local and supporting local business, and if so, where did you buy your signage? Go ahead, sir.
Stop it, stop it, is that me? Okay. Great question, you know what, and I believe that question came up at the last four, in the mayoral question. So, do I shop local? Absolutely. Do I promote shop local? Absolutely. Yes, yes, and yes. Did I buy my signs, or did I have my signs made here? No, I didn't. But I can tell you why, and actually, I've had business done with Moonlight Graphics here in the past. Know the members, the business owners are very well, great people, do great business, but I have a extended family member in Coldale, Amanda Chapel, Amanda De Lou, that has the Manx business, that makes signs, she is family. So, that is why I have done for the last four campaigns, Mandy, Amanda, Mandy, Manx, Coldale, Alberta, does a great job, I support family as well.
Thank you for that. You wanna reset the time?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't be sitting here if you didn't believe in supporting your local community, so that goes without saying almost. You know, we do have to shop elsewhere from time to time, and, you know, I've seen you all, and there's no stigma to it, it's, you know, we're, we like to be prudent with our dollars, and, but I do like shopping locally, you know, I can find my way around the home hardware with my eyes closed, and I'm getting my business done, and same with the grocery stores, and, you know, it's just the wife and I, so it's pretty convenient to do things locally. So, yeah, and, you know, with the sign thing, you know, when I ran for council four years ago, I got them done with Moonlight, and got good service, and same thing this time, so, yeah. And that was another question before too, so, yeah.
It's a popular one.
Thanks, that's-
You wanna go ahead and reset the timer again? So, this one's a little bit more in-depth, so I will read it slowly. Somebody's been doing their research. So, recent changes in Bill 50 remove the ability for council to hold a mayor to a code of conduct. What is your opinion of the balance between governance by a mayor and council and operational affairs? With this change, what would happen to a mayor if they were involved in an operational and administrative overreach? That's on you, sir. Alf, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that Bill 50, I don't know what the full intent of that one was when I saw that coming out. You know, I don't, it cannot completely remove accountability from your local mayor and council. We have a bylaw that deals with council conduct, and we also, you know, you can't, as, at the political level, involve yourself down at the operational level, you just don't do that. And there's a reason why, because council only has one employee, and that's the chief administration officer, and if you have operational concerns, that's your conduit. You go over and you see the CAO, and you say, I don't like the way this is going, this street's bumpy, that light's burnt out, and the grass is long and the weeds are growing. So that's how you get that done. You don't go out and, you know, hassle the kid on the lawnmower to get that job done. You know, and that goes particularly double for sitting in the mayor's chair, but you've gotta set the example for the rest of council, and, you know, whatever's been going on there. I mean, I sat on council, I did my apprenticeship for the mayor's chair, and I think I saw a lot going on in there. I've got some things that I want to do internally that wouldn't mean very much in here, but there's some things I think need to be tuned up a little bit internally, and to deal with transparency, but nothing's come up. I mean, this C-50's so new, that we haven't really had a chance to see it in operation, and for it to filter down and affect our policies, because the policies as it stands now, holds council and mayor accountable to a code of conduct, and with whatever's in our power, I don't think we wanna see that change.
Perfect, thank you. Andy?
The question didn't come up on the board, no.
You want me to read it again?
Sure, if it does come up on the board, the others did.
Yeah, no problem. So, recent changes to Bill 50 remove the ability for council to hold a mayor to a code of conduct. What is your opinion on the balance between governance by mayor and council and operational affairs? And with this change, what should happen to a mayor if they're involved in operational and administrative overreach?
You know, that is a really good question overall, and I think what they're suggesting to take out the code of conduct has been taken out currently, correct? And that's a problem in itself. Now, the way it stands, there's no code of contact, or code of conduct, per se, through the province, but that, as Alf says, that doesn't stop the individual council from following the policy format, you can have your own, others do, some do not. So, accountability is very important always, and now, as far as what they're proposing for changes, again, I've gone through that, but it's been a while, I don't know, there's a lot to it, right? But it's, to me, the mayor and/or council are all accountable equally, in any shape or form, and, you know, I answer to council, council answers to the public, I answer the public. We're all elected officials, we're elected by the people, for the people, by the people, and it only makes sense to be accountable in that regard. And as far as anything else involved, like Alf was referring, Alf and I worked very well together, that hasn't come out just yet, right? We have. And actually, I was actually very disappointed that Alf made the decision to go with the victim services employment as opposed to the sticking with council, because he had to do one or the other, so I'm not blaming him, but I was disappointed, I was hoping he would stay as council, I was. But, that didn't happen, but again, for the two years Alf was with, and Alf wasn't in deputy mayor role, we worked very well in that role as well. And we were always learning, we're still learning, I'm still learning, we're all learning.
Thank you for that. A little bit more of a broad question now. Do you feel that the provincial government is overstepping its authority in regards to areas of municipal jurisdiction? Andy, you can start us off with that one.
Okay, again, is that question gonna come up, or can you just reread that question? It's helpful, what is there, it is.
Yeah, it's a great feature.
Yeah, it is.
Do you feel that the provincial government is overstepping its authority in regards to areas of municipal jurisdiction?
Yeah, that is, that's a tough question, that's a loaded question, and again, I guess in a nutshell, I'd say that's a definite possibility, but I don't know if I can actually say that for sure, because even that, I haven't had any contact or discussion with our MLA Grant Hunter about that, but that's a good discussion point, and should be raised, I will raise that with Grant. But, yeah, that's a really good question, but I don't believe I can actually answer that, or answer that truthfully, without knowing more involved, what's in, what's involved, what they're driving at, what's their rationale even, it's just there on paper, right Alf? It's very gray, very unclear, as far as what their methods or their, again, rationale might be, so I don't have those answers, and could I have asked Grant previously? Yeah, yeah, I could have, but I haven't, but I certainly will, but at this stage, I just can't say that 100% for sure. I questioned it, certainly questioned it, but I can't answer that completely at this stage.
Go ahead and reset that time.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the, I'd like to say, when Andy wanted me to stay on council, or the police chief wanted me to go and work for him, what would you do? But, no, and that, I mean, the relationship with the provincial government is probably one of the most important relationships that we have here as a municipal level of government. So it's gotta be, you've gotta be able to work together, you've gotta have, you know, rules of engagement with them, we get along great with our MLA here, Grant Hunter's been superb, and he's a great friend to all, really, I mean, people in the community here know him as well, so, so that's a very important relationship. There is a hierarchy in government, and, you know, municipal government doesn't, you know, we're not wagging the dog here, the dog's wagging us, and so, we have to develop and strengthen that relationship with the provincial government, and stay onside with the program. I suppose if it comes down to them coming in and, you know, barricading Main Street or something, then they'd say, hey, that's a little overstep there, you know? I can use as an example, you know, the provincial sheriffs responsible for traffic enforcement, and one day we were sitting in the office and get a call and say, hey, what are the sheriffs doing here, like downtown, like giving out tickets? And, so, little bit of an overreach, a little bit of overstep there, and we took appropriate action, and we still work well together, but they're not writing tickets in town. So, you know, because we have that relationship with the provincial government, it's important that we maintain that, and, like, I can't think of any specific examples where they've overstepped anything. You know, big things are happening, we may see that, we'll be ready for it, we'll negotiate, negotiate, negotiate. Thank you.
Perfect. So we have time for probably one more question here, and this one again was repeated a few times by various members of the community, and it revolves around affordable housing. So, in your individual opinions, what are the challenges that we face as it kind of is impacted by affordable housing, and what would your plan include in order to make more spots for affordable housing in town? Alf, you could start this one off.
Okay, sure, yeah. Well, specifically on housing, I mean, you don't have to spend too much time driving around Tabor to see the building that's going on, so we're getting an inventory of homes now, but, you know, you've got different categories, you've got the affordable homes, you've got subsidized homes, and, but a lot of these homes that are being built here now, you know, the people that are stuck in that lower economic sector, it's very difficult to afford to move into those homes, because rents are starting at about $1,800, $2,000. So, affordable housing, there is a proposal that's been around for the number of years, to build some affordable housing, which will be geared to wages, and, but it hasn't been built. The town has committed to providing land for this project, and there's a commitment for dollars, but it's up to the province to participate, it's very, not very complicated, it's just money, you know, so you've gotta get all that money in the road to do that. So, but that's one, that's a different category of housing, that affordable housing, that would cover your people that are basically homeless, you know, they're one paycheck away from being on the street, and that would be a great boon for them, and you take, you know, single males, you know, with that 18 to 30 class of men, they have no advantage, they're not eligible for subsidized housing or anything like that, so this affordable housing would be open to all, and would be geared to income, and would service that market there, and we're looking at, I think, about 40, 45 units that would go into this structure that's being contemplated, and that would go a long way to solving things, so we're gonna continue to support that. It's been before council before, it's been on, it's not on a capital list yet, but it could make-
That's time.
Thank you.
Andy, go ahead.
All right, thank you again, Jared. You know what, that is a super question, and a huge need in our community, and the country, not just Tabor and area, or our region, but it's the whole country. And, you know, with what Alf just mentioned, that's an important factor, that's supported to go that route and to do more. that's, that's, that's supported to go that route and to do more. And, you know, we'd, uh, myself and our CO and council have had many, many conversations about what else we could do, could we do more? Yes, we can. And, uh, as Alf said, the Meadows basically is what's set up, the three hundred and two lots for that location. And I can tell you honestly, um, I believe it's five units that are out there we, we bought that were mobile home units. And I don't believe we sold anything higher than two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That kind of rings a bell, nothing higher than that. Again, they're, they're used units, but they're very good used, eight, ten, twelve years old, somewhere in that range, but very good shape. Our administration did a great job of picking those, but we succeeded to keep that under the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar mark, all five of those. The rest out there were, uh, sold to contractors who were also trying to do their level best to keep the, the numbers down. But it's still in that, even the lower one, the lower, uh, priced ones are still the three twenty range, it's kind of still over the three hundred mark. Once you get over the three hundred thousand mark, then it's kind of considered not affordable housing, right? So that's a tough dilemma. And for us, uh, it's easy for us to say, not so easy to do, and even the contractors doing their level best. Materials, it's, it's since COVID, if you can believe it, and I know you're aware of this, at one time, materials were somewhere in the neighborhood of three times what they were pre-COVID. It's not quite that bad now, I don't believe, right? But you know, that says it all. How do you deal with that effectively without some government intervention? We have had some, but we need that much more and, uh, we need some help and to focus on that in the future, absolutely.
Thank you for that. So that is the end of, uh, the questions that were posed specifically for our mayoral candidates. Um, so we're going to go ahead and give everybody two minutes to do your kind of closing speech. Um, I believe Alf, you started us off, so Andy, why don't you start us off this time?
Okay, well, thank you so much. Um, yeah, you know, it's, uh, for me, it's twelve years on council. Again, like I said before, eight, eight and a half years as mayor, proud to be your mayor, honored to be your mayor and happy to be your mayor again, if, uh, that is in the cards. And, uh, more work to be done. Hope that can, I can go forward with that with another great council. I see nothing but great things for the future. Tabor is booming right now, Tabor is thriving, Tabor is very hot right now in many, many ways and no end in sight anytime soon. So happy to be part of that, why, ride that wave. And you know what? It's not going to last forever. We're growing, you can't stop growth and, uh, more to come. So, uh, as far as our council is concerned, this is very, uh, important to myself and/or the current council. And about a year ago, October, yeah, actually, a year ago, October twenty twenty-four, council confirmed and, uh, advised that, uh, the number one priority for the next project, major project, was a dry sports facility. And, uh, we are that much further into that, into the study that needs to be done or suggested to be done. That's maybe a little bit of a question whether it actually needs to be done, but it's, it's already on the books to, to be done, to the tune of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. But, uh, going forward, it's, it's not a matter of, uh, if it will happen, when it will happen, it will happen. And, uh, the Tabor Titans was some part of, uh, and proud to be part of the Tabor Titans. That's a great group, great legacy, great group of guys. Uh, I'm on the board, asked to be on the board, happy to help them wherever I can. They graciously donated fifty thousand dollars to that project and that's the first ever. And that was highly publicized very recently in, in the last month or so. And, uh, proud of those guys, proud to be part of that and looking forward to the future.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, I, I, I think it's time for change. Um, there's, there's, I, I work for the town, so I, I get a unique perspective, um, as a town employee. And, uh, so I, I think internally, I think it's time for some change. And, uh, I'd be, I'd be happy to drive that change and be the, be the person to do that, uh, not for the town employees and, and, uh, resulting, uh, in, in a better service level for the community of Tabor as well. So, um, without getting, without getting adversarial, um, the, um, that dry sports facility, uh, back in twenty fifteen, uh, that's a long time ago, there was a, uh, now, you know, how structured a study it was or not, there was some money put in and invested in a committee to go out and do some research and, uh, come up with some ideas and, and actually they did great work and, uh, actually had a, a, a plan and a facility and, and there was a lot of, uh, good thing, it just, it just never happened. You know, and it, it's come back onto the radar here now, um, which I'm glad to see. Uh, the rules have changed a little bit. In order to get any grant money, you have to invest in this feasibility study that's, uh, you know, costing the town a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in that neighborhood. And, and, but that's just the way it is. I mean, to, to make any progress in that facility. The other thing is, uh, you know, we've got, um, you know, we, we have, we have the Tabor District Housing Foundation here in town, uh, we need some improvements over to Clearview Corner, uh, to get that facility up to snuff. And, uh, that's another thing that I can say will happen. Um, we'll see, we'll see, uh, progress there and we'll see a new facility there, an improved facility and a, and a renovated facility. So, um, and that's, that's something that we're gonna, gonna push on as well and participate in as well. So, um, I, I'd love, I'd love the job. Uh, this isn't a cold call. I, you know, I, I, I've been thinking about this and, uh, and now I hear.
That's, that's a wrap. Thank you both very much for coming out tonight, giving us your time and, and bearing with us for some questions. So thank you very much. So we're going to go ahead and just take five minutes, retool a little bit up here. You can see there's a lot of microphones because we've got a lot of people to, to get put in place. So bear with us, we'll get everybody from, that's running for town council up there All right, if everybody wants to go ahead and make their way to their seat, which looks like most people are, we'll get going here in just a couple of minutes. All right. We got a lot to get through, so we'll just jump in. So we're going to go with the, a very similar program here. Um, everybody's going to get two minutes to kind of give you a speech, talk to their platform, give you a little bit of information about themselves. And then we will again move into a Q and A portion. Given that we have eleven people here, um, we're going to drop the time down to respond to each question to a minute. If you would like to respond, we're going to go in order based on how you draw or how you drew, and I will call your name.
Fellow candidates for stepping forward. I'd also like to thank the residents here and watching online for taking an interest in this election. A bit about me, I was raised on a farm in the MD of Tabor and Tabor has always been home. My husband Pete and I are raising our two children, following my family's footsteps and continuing our tradition of being active members of the Tabor community. Our family has benefited from the many services Tabor offers, from the library to recreation. And I want every family to feel the same sense of safety and opportunity. For almost eight years, I have managed the Tabor Food Bank, building food security alongside staff and volunteers. This position has shown me firsthand the challenges some of the residents in our town face, whether it's housing, food insecurity, or a lack of transportation. My educational background is in accounting and nonprofit management, and I see a lot of similarities between town operations and running a nonprofit. Governance and operations each have distinct roles and respecting that balance is key to good decision-making. I have sat on boards of several organizations, including TCAPS, and as the treasurer for the Tabor and District 4H. I've done my best to support youth as a 4H leader and through other roles such as various parent councils. I believe service is the best way to understand residents' needs, so I also do my best to volunteer at community events. If elected, I would try to bring forward new ideas like a youth advisory group while also focusing on housing instability, housing stability, youth opportunities, and economic growth. I believe real change comes from working alongside residents, not above them. And I'm continued to serving, committed to serving Tabor in a way that makes our community vibrant and welcoming for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up would be Josh Antonak.
I'm Josh Antonak. Just scrouched, uh, go down a little bit. I, uh, I grew up in Tabor, uh, and I'm proud to, to live here. I, I got my bachelor's degree in finance at the BYU Marriott School of Management in the States, and at the time it was ranked eleventh in the nation. And I graduated, um, from that successfully and got a job right back up here. There was different opportunities, but I, I chose to come back to my hometown. Uh, I have, uh, my wife and three kids. I'm one of the younger people on the panel. Uh, as I've served in different things, I've, I look around the room and each section, I'm like, I've served with someone from this section, from this section, from this section. So I hope people have seen me and it's just not just that young guy that's out there. But that's what I'm going for. Um, but I have three reasons why I think you should vote for me. One is my background in finance. I have worked for the same person for fourteen years and he had a business that's been running for twenty years. And I analyze, I, I use my stu, uh, I used my education to do analysis of his company and something that he thought was the most profitable part of his business, turned out it was one of the least. And we completely changed that aspect and his whole mind changed and we have now switched our goal. Uh, so that's one thing that I think I could bring. It's not just a gut feeling, but I will bring experience and knowledge, um, that I have. The next one is I've had an opportunity to serve in different places. I was on the Tabor Food Bank Board for two years and you don't see many young males that age on the board. And it was one that I was appointed and chosen to go on to that. Um, I served as chair for the Community Garden. I'm not sure if you know, it's been going for nine years. This year they donate almost twenty-two thousand pounds to the food bank. Um, I have a vested interest in Tabor. I have a kid in elementary school, middle school, high school. My dad's here and my grandma's here.
And that's time. Just got it in. Okay, next up, Randy Sparks.
My name is Randy Sparks and I'm running for position of, a position on town council. I have lived in Tabor for sixty-eight years. I'm married to Diane and have four children and four grandchildren who all live in Tabor. I worked for Tabor Irrigation District for forty-five years. My wife and I have two businesses in town, The Health Connection and Body Master's Gym. In the past, I served on council for thirteen years and loved the challenge associated with this position. I always took my role as counselor very seriously. What we need in our community are leaders, both men and women who are honest, transparent, and willing to stand for decency, integrity, morality, and law and order. We need leaders that are not afraid to stand up for what we, they believe is best for our community, even when it is unpopular to do so. We need leaders who are concerned about the future of Tabor and because of this will not make any decisions that will put Tabor's future at risk. We need leaders that will say no to those influencers, whether they be family, friends, relatives, developers, business associates, employers, or those we attend church with who try to get mayor and council to share valuable information with them or use behind-the-scenes tactics to direct or influence decisions that will be in their best interests, not the town's. In the end, it does not matter who has the most campaign signs, the biggest signs or signs in just the right place. It does not matter who makes the most campaign promises. What does matter is accountability and performance by those who are elected by the residents of Tabor. I know and believe that the experience, knowledge, and expertise I have gained from being a town counselor will be very valuable in representing the residents of Tabor at all times and in all places.
That's time. Thank you. Uh, next up, Phyllis Monks Jensen.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for taking time out of your day to come here tonight and learn about the candidates before deciding who you'll vote for. My name is Phyllis Monks Jensen and I would very much appreciate your vote. I have worked in municipal government for over thirteen years. Three years of that was as the Director of Planning and Engineering for the Town of Tabor. Sorry, planning and development, economic development. I moved to Tabor in two thousand and eighteen in order to take on that role, and I very much loved the work that I was able to do in that time. I was also the subdivision planner at the City of Airdrie for ten years before I came here to Tabor. I really enjoy living in Tabor and appreciate so much the sense of community that I have seen here. The people of Tabor and the MD are so focused on improving the quality of life for our community and work very hard to achieve things. community and work very hard to achieve things, and it's hard not to get excited and wanna be a part of that. From the construction of the splash park, the bike trails, and the trout pond, the food bank garden, Corn Fest, and our new cornstalk festival, to name a few, building a healthy community is at the forefront. We have so many amazing nonprofit organizations working hard to make the changes so necessary for our community to thrive. There's so much to be proud of in Tabor. Let's never forget that. I believe that I can be a great asset to the town in a role of councillor. I've worked within the parameters of the Municipal Government Act and understand the duties of a councillor. I believe I can be a support to the community organizations, our citizens, and our town staff. I'm interested in bringing about a higher level of transparency for council in the town. I believe that we can improve areas of our budget process and provide better information in the packages provided to council and to the public in our agenda packages, explanations and rationale behind recommendations, thorough budget packages that allow us to see the impacts of our budget asks. I'm hopeful for full engagement in council meetings so that the public can see that we aren't pushing things through and rubber stamping without making sure it's the right choice. I wanna be the kind of councillor that you know you can reach out to when you need help understanding processes.
Thank you. Next up, Daniel Remford.
I'm Dan Remford. I was born and raised in Tabor, own a small business in town that's been family-run for the last 50 years, and I'm hoping to get re-elected to Tabor Town Council. I've been on Town Council for the last two years. I was able to be part of bringing summer games, Alberta, Southern Alberta Summer Games, along with the Tabor 120 Birthday Celebration. That brought thousands of spectators and participants and generated roughly $1.5 million to the town of Tabor. I've been part of the property tax initiative over the last two years that has brought many businesses and housing to Tabor. Just in 2025, admin and council have been part of over $14 million in family homes, multifamily and single-family, showing that that initiative is working. I've collaborated with lots of local organizations, like Trail 77, in the expansion of their trails. I've worked with the Tabor Titans recently in the development of a future dry sports facility. I've sat before council, before I got on council, I sat on the Tabor Police Commission, and I'm a huge supporter of our outstanding municipal police force. Outside of council and work, I'm a hockey ref. I also am the president of Tabor Minor Hockey. I'm a husband, and importantly, I'm a dad to two wonderful kids. Lastly, my experience as a councillor, I have learned the importance of listening and gathering perspective of others. A councillor's ideas aren't always the only one, right? Also weighing the needs of youth, seniors, small business versus large is required to make impactful decisions. So please, when voting in the upcoming election, I would love your support. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you. So next up, we have Jack Bruin.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and I appreciate the Chamber of Commerce hosting this. I am Jack Bruin, and I'm running to be re-elected to council. There's still a lot of work to be done, and still a lot to finish. My dedication to Tabor's growth and stability is stronger than ever. We need to focus on smart economic decisions to create sustainable jobs for our young people and to keep our economy growing. I remain committed to keeping taxes fair while still being able to deliver our essential services, keeping parks and our buildings and recreations facilities in good shape. A councillor's job is not just to debate, but to listen. I will continue to be accessible and a responsible voice for every residence, from our seniors to our youth and for our businesses. I bring with me proven results, a clear vision, and a deep personal commitment to our community. Before I'm done, I wanted to thank someone who served on the Town Council for 20 years, and he retired this year. So I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Garth Beckreen for your service and your commitment to the town of Tabor. You will be very much missed.
Thank you, Jack. Next up, Joanne Sorenson.
Okay. Hi, my name's Joanne Sorenson, and I'm seeking reelection for Town Council. I would like to thank the Tabor and District Chamber of Commerce, Micro Glow, and the Tabor Legion for holding this event, and good luck to our fellow candidates. A little bit about me, I grew up in Tabor. I married my school, high school sweetheart. We're married for 31 years, and we have two daughters who are married and living in Luthbridge right now. My background, I have a business management certificate. I have accounting background, or education in health and safety. Before I started working, well, first, I started with my mom and dad picking rocks at their farm. Then I moved to the Max Convenience Store, and then I continued my career working for my family, my mother's family business of H&R Block. And then I moved to my husband and father-in-law's business, which has been in business for 36 years, and I've been working there. I have deep roots and ties to this community and wish to see it continue to flourish and grow. I've sat on several boards, and as my family grew, I matured into my volunteering, shifting from school and sports to supporting the business community. Anyone who knows me knows I have a hard work ethic, and I'd rather pull up my sleeves and get to work than just watch and sit on the sidelines. I have sat on the chamber board for eight years now, and my initiative for the chamber has been the Local First Program, and shopping, and supporting local businesses.
And that's time.
Oh.
Next up, we have Dale Tillman.
Hi, my name's Dale Tillman. I'd like to thank the chamber here for this event, and I'd like to thank all of you people for coming here. I am married, I am a dad, and I am a grandpa. And I'm not the youngest on board here on the table. So anyways, I taught high school for 34 years, and I've served six years as the High Performance Coordinator for Alberta Amateur Baseball. I've coached a number of youth teams in basketball, baseball, wrestling, and volleyball. I've assisted on the WHAM executive, as well as the Norcrest Little League. I've volunteered on the baseball field for a couple of years here, and I've also helped with the Tabor Lions projects. And I've also been on a number of numerous ATA and educational boards. My platform, as far as Town Council is concerned, my first thing I have listed here would be to revitalize the downtown core. I kinda, I see it as being urban decline, and I'd like to go ahead and try, do our best to try to change the appearance of it. I'd like to see us invest some in some ornamentation, some shrubs, and some murals. I'd like to reflect our unique history here in Tabor as far as agriculture and irrigation is concerned. And I'd also like to attract some unique businesses. I think there's a great opportunity to get, you know, I'd like, for example, to bring in some novel businesses that would attract people or cause people to wanna travel downtown. I think traffic is important. I'd also like to see greater focus, or more monies put towards our streets, and our lights especially. I'd like to see greater accountability from our town managers. I'd also like to see us bring in some sort of budget system called zero-based budgeting. In other words, if, I think that'll help us get greater efficiency as far as the dollars spent. And the last thing is, I'd like to see a little less in-camera sessions with Town Council, and I'd like to have greater openness or accountability regarding decision-making. We are elected officials, we should be accountable for our decisions. Hopefully, that, my platform appeals to you.
Thank you very much. Monica McLean.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Monica McLean. A little bit about me is I was raised in Tabor. My maiden name is Steed, so you might know some Steeds around town. I grew up in Tabor. Me and my husband are now raising our four kids here. I've had the privilege of serving on our Town Council for the past four years, and I'm proud to call this community home. As a working mom of four, I know firsthand the challenges that families and residents face every day, and the importance of sound decision-making at the council table. My priorities are simple. First, responsible growth, so our community develops in a balanced and sustainable way. Second, fiscal responsibility, making sure taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. Third, putting families and community first by supporting services, infrastructure, and programs that improve quality of life. I'm committed to listening, communicating openly, and working hard to ensure our town remains a safe, welcoming, and vibrant place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, but not least, Leanne Friesen. Oh geez, sorry, Carley. Oh, I was doing such a good job. And you were number four.
I know, I was like...
Carley, why don't you go ahead and go next?
Thanks. Thank you to the chamber for hosting my fellow candidates, and to all of you for taking time out of your evening to come and listen to all of us talk. I'm Carley Firth. I'm seeking my third term on council. My background is in communications and education. I'm a mom, a wife to two boys. I was, I've lived in Tabor most of my life and happy to be raising my kids here. During election campaigns, it can be hard to sort through the noise and to understand how candidates' promises and priorities will actually benefit you in your day-to-day life. You hear lots of buzzwords like transparency and accountability, and, don't get me wrong, both of those are very important, but what does that actually mean? For me, that means being available to answer questions, to provide information about decisions, to explain the background, and bringing citizens' concerns forward for all of council. And ultimately, for me, all of the issues boil down to just one, and that's trust. Can you trust that the person that you elect is going to make the best decisions they can with the information that they have at the time? Can you trust that they'll make the tough decisions even when it's not popular? Can you trust that they will set aside their own agenda and personal priorities for the benefit of all the people? Can you trust that they will spend your tax dollars with careful consideration and for the benefit of all? And can you trust that they will hold themselves and their colleagues on council to a higher standard? Priorities will shift, roadblocks come up, but if you have trust in the people that are governing, then you don't have anything to worry about. So I humbly ask that you'll place that trust in me for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Carley. Leanne, you're up next. Leanne Friesen, sorry.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see many familiar faces here, and to the ones I haven't met, I look forward to meeting you. I haven't had a chance to, sorry. I'm proud to call Tabor my home. This town isn't where I live, it's my story, where my story began. I grew up here as a business-owning family that taught me the importance of hard work, service, and community. For the past 21 years, my husband Dustin and I have built a home and life here with our kids, putting down roots around very deep. Many of you know me through my business, which I've owned and operated for the past 14 years, but beyond my work, you've probably also seen me around the rink, the gym, the ball diamonds. I've had the privilege of serving on many boards for Tabor, minor hockey, gymnastics, minor ball. I helped start the Tabor Thrashers Lacrosse Club and the Junior B Lacrosse Team, and I also coached volleyball and at the high school level and club for WHAM for the last five seasons. All of these experiences aren't just bullet points on a list, they represent the importance to me of teamwork, whether it's building a business, supporting a community, supporting the youth in the community, bringing people together for a common goal. I've learned that when we share a vision and work as a team, we can achieve some pretty amazing things. That's the spirit I want to bring to Town Council. Over the last while, I've been listening to what matters to people, concerns about transparency, about how our tax dollars are being spent, about making sure that every voice in our community is heard, and I want you to know I hear you. I promise to bring common sense, decision-making, financial responsibility, and a collaborative approach to council. I don't believe any one person could or should have all the answers, but I believe if we work together with respect and accountability, we can make decisions that reflect on the best for Tabor. I'm not asking you to vote tonight, I'm asking you to join me in building a council that represents the true strength and potential our town deserves.
Thank you so much, everybody, we appreciate it. It's, I was gonna make the joke that this is the first-ever election forum that's ever been ahead of schedule, helps when you skip people, so. So we are gonna move into the Q and A section of tonight. Given again that we have so many people sitting up front here, we're gonna, we're gonna give everybody one minute to answer these questions, if you so choose. We will start in the same order that we went through your introductions with, and we're probably gonna get through extra questions because everybody's been so efficient, so thank you. So the first question, and this was posed several times, and that is kinda how we went about kind of amalgamating these questions, was whichever ones were asked most frequently took priority, so we will work our way down that list. So the first one, what are your ideas for downtown revitalization and beautification? And we will start with Naomi Weep.
My ideas for downtown revitalization, I have, I agree with some of Dale's suggestions. I don't wanna put extra work on communities in bloom and things like that by adding too many more flowers, but I do think we need some more ideas down there. I think that'd be a good question to have a public discussion with businesses about, because businesses in the community are the ones that know how things are going and what needs to be changed to make them more successful.
Perfect, thank you. Josh Antonuk?
With what Naomi said, I agree with those things. I was talking, it's been, one of the cool things about being a candidate is people have been coming up to me with issues, and I just have my little book, and whenever someone says something, I write it down. One of them said that there was the Tabor Citizen Walkabout, where it was recognizing the people of the community and what you do, and they were saying, some of the people from Tabor Specialties, that the sidewalks weren't even a place where some of them, they had to lift up their feet, or like, they're walkers, they couldn't access the sidewalks, so I would start with there. I, I think anything's as strong as your weakest chain, and you just find what the people say is the bottom one, and you fix that, and then you go to the next one, and the next one. So, flowers are great, and community in bloom, they do amazing things, but fix the things that need to be fixed.
Great, thank you. Randy Sparks.
Well, the focus definitely hasn't been within the downtown core. The focus of beautification and moving things has been everywhere but the downtown core. We have, the downtown core of the town of Tabor at one time was very vibrant and very active and very alive, but over the years, that has changed. Things have moved away, things have moved south, they've moved east, but we can't forget the downtown core. We need to get together with the people who run businesses in the downtown core, collaborate with them, see what their future focus is, and do what we can as a Town Council to assist them in bringing more business and more beautification as other communities within Southern Alberta. Coldale, Fort MacLeod, Bow Island, they've all done it. If they can do it, the town of Tabor can do a much better job than they can.
Thank you, Randy. Next up, Carley Firth.
Thanks so much, Jared. I think that there is more to be done with the ballboats and the trees downtown. It certainly looks a lot more inviting, but I don't know what that's actually doing to drive business downtown. And council's solutions are only half of it. We need buy-in from local businesses. We need them to want to beautify their storefronts. Chinook Community Futures is partnered with the town of Tabor, and we can, we provide grants for businesses to improve their facades or improve the look of their building. We also have a plan that businesses can access to create a unified theme downtown so that it looks cohesive, it looks like everything belongs, and maintaining that infrastructure too, I think, is really key.
Thank you. I'm gonna drop last names, we're past that point now. Phyllis?
Yeah, so I'm actually Vice Chair of Community Future Chinook, and we do have a very extensive loan program for beautification of the buildings, and we started with the downtown, and I think it's been expanded out, because we actually weren't getting enough applicants always downtown. And you wanna use up your funding that you have, so you make sure that when a business wants to do improvements, and they apply for a loan, you give them that loan, right? So, but I do feel like there is some more to be done in our downtown, things like possibly influencing some of the business owners downtown to fix up their structures, just even the broken glass, you know, the sidewalks is a very big thing. broken glass, the, you know, the sidewalks is a very big thing. We, we also deal with someone in a wheelchair and they can't get to and from different places. The parking for barrier-free isn't always available in the downtown, and the businesses aren't open late enough to make for a thriving downtown. So it depends on that mix as well.
Thank you. Daniel?
First off, I've sat on Town Council and we have a program, a policy, you know, with our tax initiative. If you renovate your space, you get property tax decrease on what you, what you increase your value of your business. So we're doing that right now. So the council's doing that right now. Supporting the Chamber of Commerce, who is great to help us in the downtown. We also support Communities in Bloom, but the biggest thing I would have to say as a business owner downtown, I mean, you guys shop downtown, eat downtown, right? You know, that, that'll help. You know, we gotta do it. That'll help. Our businesses that get supported downtown, right? You know, they will make that income, they will be able to invest in their own business, they will see that, you know, better. You know, it's us, right? Council's doing their job, it's up to us too. Thanks.
Thank you. Jack?
Thank you. The fellow candidates have made some great, fantastic points. Downtown is very important to the heart of the city. It's, you know, when I was a little kid, I remember going downtown and I was in the big city, but times have changed and things have moved off to the different areas of Tabor, but downtown should still be the heart of the city. I think the beautiful, beautification program with the shrubs and that is a good idea, but they do have to be maintained, so there's costs to that. When you drive around downtown on the weekends, on a Saturday, it's like driving through Tombstone. You see a tumbleweed go across the street. We gotta encourage our businesses to open on Saturdays and perhaps Sundays so people don't go up to Lethbridge to do their shopping, because Lethbridge is fairly close, it's an easy drive now with the Twins highways. The Community Futures Loan is a great program. I wish more people would take advantage of it, and we gotta beautify our downtown and keep it vibrant.
Thank you. Joanne?
Okay, well, we have, no. Restart the timer. No, okay. But obviously, I work with the chamber and the Local First Initiative, and our main focus was making people go and shop in our local businesses, so that's the driver, and Council Remford hit that right on the nose. I would like to invest more in business vitality, retaining and growing businesses in Tabor, supporting local, obviously, local first, Tabor grown, so supporting that. I'm also thinking that we need to invest more in technology, so part of that is the initiative of bringing wi, free Wi-Fi downtown, and so I'd like to grow that because obviously technology is a huge factor in new businesses and supporting the, our local economy is also technology-driven.
Thank you. Dale?
Sorry. Randy's right, it hasn't been a focus for the past Town Council. We need to dial it up. Years ago, I used to go ahead and get my teeth done in Coldale. Gary Amashita from Vauxhall was a dentist, and I can remember going there on Saturday mornings because I taught school, and that would be almost like you're driving through Grassy Lake, Hazor Inchen. There was nobody there. And I think Jack referenced it, it's kinda what it is downtown here in Tabor. And hand it to Coldale. They've done a great job. There's a lot more traffic in downtown area, so those who doubt or don't think it'd work, it'd work there, and if anybody could have mailed it in, it's Coldale, the proximity of Lethbridge. I do think we've got, as I said, our history is unique, and I think it's a great thing we can build on, and I think we have to not just kinda talk around it, we need to, it needs to be more of a focus.
Thank you. Monica?
Thank you. Our downtown is the core of our town, and so we do need to focus on it. My fellow councillors have already talked about a lot of the grant opportunities and funding opportunities that are available through the Community Futures Program, through the Communities in Bloom and all the work that they have done to help beautify our town. It really does go a long way. Making it so people wanna spend more time downtown is important, and the way that we can do that is through more beautification, through improvements of the sidewalks and the roads. Better lighting is important. The walkability is also important. Focusing on those things draws then more people into our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanne?
All right. Being a business owner myself, a lot of it is, you guys, we need to start talking to business owners, letting them know what's available, showing them like what can be done and how it can be done, and communicating with the businesses themselves. We can all sit here and say like, there's all these grants and stuff available, but as a business owner, if you don't know that, it's pretty hard to access them. So I feel like a lot of it needs to come from council itself and the town and all these different groups approaching the different businesses and actually showing them what there is available and trying to help them with that so that they can best fix their businesses themselves. Also, yes, sidewalks and parking are definitely an issue downtown for a lot of people, especially elderly people, that are tripping on curbs and finding it hard to find parking spaces close to businesses as well.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. So next question that was posed to us actually several times again. How will you ensure that every tax dollar is used effectively and provides value for residents? Can you name a program or project you think is underperforming? What would you do about it? Now, that's a lot. If you need to reframe it, we'll get that on the board there. Did you get that back there, Rick? No? I'll talk slowly. What are you typing back there? Five words a minute? How will you ensure that every tax dollar is used effectively and provides value for residents? We'll just leave that part. You can't put that on there? Okay, we'll break this into two-part question. So just starting off with the first portion here, how will you ensure that tax dollars are used effectively and provide value to residents? And we will start off with Naomi.
Naomi, again, this is so exciting for me. I guess my question towards that would be effective to who? Because my priorities might be different than Dale's or Randy's or anyone else's down the table, so I feel like that's a very vague and hard question to answer. I guess I would have liked a little more specificity on it if they had something that they were specifically thinking about. A program that's not working efficiently? I don't have anything off the top of my mind.
Josh?
To, to be honest, I think my, as I stated earlier, my financial background. I think I have the ability to look at numbers and be able to do analysis and be able to look at that, and I'm not saying like, I just met Joanne a little bit in person for the first time, and she has that accounting, finance background as well, so I just like to add to what's already there, not take anything away, but just add. And to be honest, I don't know a program. Not being on council, I hope to be, I don't have that opportunity yet, so I'm not just gonna say something and make something up.
Fair enough. Randy?
Well, one of the best ways to make sure your tax dollars are spent wisely is to take those revenues you're getting from taxation very, very seriously. They're coming from residents of the Town of Tabor, so council and those who are making the decisions regarding tax dollars must, must be very vigilant in making sure that every tax dollar is spent wisely, that the efficiencies are where they are, and there's all kinds of ways to be efficient. Employees can be efficient, we have great employees in the Town of Tabor. They need to be efficient in their duties. All the leaders within the town need to be efficient. Tax dollars are very vital and important to each one of us as a resident of the Town of Tabor, and the leadership of this town must make sure that they are spent wisely and prudently.
Thank you. Carlie?
One of the most important ways to ensure your tax dollars are used effectively is to prioritize projects that will benefit the majority of the people, and I know everybody has a different idea about what those priorities are, and that's, that's the challenge of being on council, is to try and figure out what, what the right answer is. Also contributing to infrastructure so that you're not just spending today, but you are looking forward, so that you don't have those catastrophic failures that can, can be so devastating for a community. And balancing the level of service with the tax dollars that are spent. So everybody's always quick to say, you know, I pay my taxes, my taxes go up, how come my road isn't plowed? Well, my, we really try and do the best that we can with what we have, and I assure you, it's, we are very careful with how we spend.
Thank you. Phyllis?
Yeah, that's a good one. I mean, everything is, is important to the person it's important to, right? So now we're gonna take a pool of this money and we're gonna figure out where it's best spent. So we're gonna rely on input from the staff, right? I mean, they're out in the public, they're doing their diligence with their positions, they are hopefully working on an asset management plan, they're cycling the replacement of vehicles, they're, you know, cycling, replacing areas of sidewalk and road maintenance and repair. I mean, I have a personal beef with assaulting and not actually plowing the roads, but that's like, that's from my experience somewhere else, but, so I, I don't know, like, we wanna be as effective as we can, we wanna look at the tax dollars that we have. I think one of the ones that council recently did was the sale of water rights and SMRID. That's a boon to the town, where that money goes is gonna be important, and who figures out where it goes.
Thank you. Just to make sure I don't miss anybody. Daniel?
I'm gonna go with accountability. Two years ago, I ran on a platform of housing and growing the town. Taxes are lower, houses are being built, businesses are, are being built, youth organizations are being supported. So accountability, you know, the citizens' interaction with council, these elections, you know, vote, you know, go out there and vote. Vote for the people that you believe will be accountable, will be effective. I've proven in what I've said I was gonna do, and that's happened over the last two years. So you guys hold us accountable and we'll spend it effectively. Thanks.
Jack?
Thank you. It's a very, very good question. The councils, I've been on for three terms now. I think we've been fairly prudent with the money we spend. Lot of thought goes into some of these decisions. One of my biggest pet peeves with spending tax dollars is studies. Study, study, study. Let's make up our mind and get something done and not waste time doing studies on it. Taxes in Town of Tabor are actually very well managed, in my opinion. We have one of the lowest taxes in the province. Every year when we, we do our budgets, we're, you know, our goal is to keep the taxes as low as we possibly can, but, you know, roads need to be plowed, things need to be fixed, so we do our very best to keep taxes spent where they should be spent.
Joanne?
Something that pops to mind is the Meadows, so that was quite a big, big investment of tax dollars. Unfortunately, you know, COVID hit and the sales just were delayed, so as council, we had to think fast on our feet and come up with a different way of moving the land so that we can start selling and getting hopefully some low-income housing available to the residents, because obviously there was a huge shortage of affordable housing in the area. Another thing would be that the water clarifier needed to be repaired, and it's a huge cost, and we needed to get it done immediately. So I asked council or administration to maybe perhaps look at the assets and create a management plan in being proactive, not reactive, so that we can kind of plan for things that need to be repaired instead of, oh.
Sorry, I missed that one. Nice work back there. Dale?
Opening speech, I mentioned something called zero-based budgeting, and what that would mean is the fact that they have to be detailed as far as every segment or every aspect of the budget. So, so some of the aspects in the last budget, I don't know if you guys, a lot of you took a look at them, but they're pretty general. I'll give you one example, it talked about $75,000 towards maintenance of a park, but it doesn't state whether that money's gonna be spent on equipment or structures or shrubbery. So something like that would come out of the budget. We do, the, when the managers or the administrators come in and present a budget, they should know that, like some of you people in your, you've had the experience of reproducing your notes for an exam, and that needs to be. So I think that would be one way to make, ensure that our dollars are spent more efficiently. And the last one, talk to the workers. They'll tell you where the money can be saved. I think that that's a resource that hasn't been tapped into very much by administration, possibly even the council themselves.
Monica?
Oh, there we go. Thanks. Getting as much information as possible really makes us decide on how to effectively and efficiently spend tax dollars. Asking tough questions, that's also a way to ensure that they are used effectively and making sure that, okay, where are we actually gonna spend the money? Where does it need to go? Looking at the priorities of the members of the community, is this meeting the residents' needs? Those are the priorities, and that's where the money and taxpayers' money should go. Being proactive, we are getting an asset management program in place so that we do know where the needs will be coming, so that we are then saving for those needs and putting money aside to replace infrastructure, like buildings and roads, and so that we are prepared for the future. Thank you.
Leanne?
I feel our tax dollars just need to be used, like it says, on, on priorities, but not on my priorities, on what people around the community actually want, what they see, what the people that work for the town and are dealing with all the problems around town constantly, what they're seeing and what they need. And I just feel like it's, those people are the ones that we need to contact and talk to and get our information from before we prioritize what we want.
Thank you. I hate to be the one to do that, I apologize. So, I feel horrible. Okay, so on, onto our next question. So candidates often speak about opportu- Oh, all right, keep chatter down. So candidates often speak about opportunities for economic growth. What specific ideas do you see for businesses in Tabor? And we're gonna start in the same order, Naomi. So you're up.
Well, I'm just gonna really quickly, I'm sorry, I'm jumping back. Council keeps talking about the Meadows. It's not an affordable, it was never an affordable housing, $200,000, $300,000 for someone who's living on Aish and low income and has no transportation. There's no way that that's affordable housing, it should not have been built as such. Sorry. Sorry, can you repeat the question? Because I focused on that, so.
Candidates often speak about opportunities for economic growth. What specific ideas do you see for businesses in Tabor?
Economic growth, there is the Dry Recreation Centre that's now been talking about. I think that that would be a good way to promote having families in the community. Affordable housing is a big one, because if there's not housing in the community, how are we gonna promote economic growth? If you're, if you have nowhere for your workers to live, there's no one that can come into our community, so we have to be focusing on those families and what they need.
Josh?
I agree with that, the dry sport facility, but also for the programs we have in place. I think these programs come to council and they have, they want support. I think it's supporting them, the, the organizations that we have in place already, and helping them to continue to grow. I had someone from a local sports organization come up to me and said, they approached two councillors, and they said it felt like they didn't care about us and they didn't say, and I'm not saying that happened, but that's how they felt, and feelings are important. I feel going to those organizations and businesses and listening to them is important, and that's what's going to lead to future growth.
Randy?
Well, just quickly, my opinion is economic growth is, is driven by a huge focus on the family. The family and their needs should always be very important to every community and every municipality within this great country of Canada. We need to look at the needs of each family, whether it be the cost of housing or, or recreation facilities, or, or what the family- facilities, or what the families need to sustain themselves in this crazy world we live in of high prices of everything. There's many, many families that just, I don't know how they survive. I don't know how the low-to-medium-income family survives. And to drive economic growth and to drive growth as a whole within our community, we really need to focus on the needs of each and every family that lives here. Thank you.
Carly?
Thank you. I think some of the opportunities for economic growth, we already have some of the programs in place, the commercial and residential tax incentives, I think, need to continue until we see the amount of growth that we would like, and then maybe we can start to roll that back. Also, asking businesses what the town can do to help them thrive. Sometimes economic growth is so focused on attracting new business, attracting new industry, and that's important, but it's also important to take care of the businesses that have built this community, and to find out what they need, what council and the town can do to help them to continue to thrive in our community, because those are the, they're the ones that give back to our community.
Phyllis?
Yeah, so, we had a partnership with Community Futures and the Town of Tabor and the MD of Tabor, and we were creating economic development videos for different businesses within the community and organizations. And I think those are great, I think those business videos need to continue, and I think it would be kind of neat to have them maybe playing on a TV in your dentist's office when you go, so you can see highlights of different businesses. We need to ensure there's housing to meet staffing needs, strong communities with amenities attract businesses, that dry sport facility's a good idea. Government of Canada has new funding for work-integrated learning with collaboration between post-secondary institutes and businesses, so we can, you know, use some of those work learning initiatives for our businesses to get some skilled labor that they maybe are lacking. Annual surveys of businesses, where we can assist, where we can lower costs, those kinds of initiatives.
Daniel?
Thank you. Keep taxes lower. There's over three hundred municipalities in Alberta, right? We're in the top thirty of the lowest municipal tax. If we keep that lower, there will be future growth. Also, supporting our youth, right? That will keep, and with jobs here and low taxes, we can keep business growing, and it'll keep our youth around, and our town will grow and grow and grow. It'll be fantastic. So, support this council that's been there, keeping taxes lower. Top thirty, lowest in Alberta. Awesome, thanks.
Jack?
Thank you. The more money we can keep in people's pockets, the better we all are, they all spend it. We gotta really support our local businesses, shop local whenever possible. One of the biggest opportunities that's facing us right now is the Twin Inn of Highway Three. The amount of traffic that's coming and going to be traveling through Tabor, we gotta capitalize on that. We are the center of the agrifood corridor. Tabor has so many opportunities in the future. If we could attract another food processing plant into the towns, things like that, we gotta pursue big businesses to come to Tabor. And again, shop local, support as much as we can. And Tabor's, Tabor's right there, we're a shining light, we're getting noticed by businesses in Canada and even abroad, that this is the location. Our irrigation water rights, we're living in the banana belt here right now, and lots of opportunities are coming.
Joanne?
Economic vibrancy is quite a driver for me. I go and attend the Alberta Economic Development Conference every year and just find new ways that other communities are, you know, adding economic drivers to their community, and so I'm learning from that. Reduction of red tape for businesses, the property tax incentive, so not only are new businesses, but existing businesses that are wanting to expand, they're able to benefit from that. And then the Alberta provincial immigration program that we were able to help businesses fill their needed positions to even continue opening, continue having their business open. So that's the focus for me.
Dale?
First off, I'd like to see that dry center, rec center built as close to the downtown as possible. I think that that'll help drive the local economy. I think Jack's right, I think we try to invest in foodstuff industries, I don't think Chevron or Dodge are gonna build a plant in Tabor, but I think there are some crops that I see growing more, hemp, I see a lot more hemp, I see pumpkins. And also, years ago, there was a sunflower seed plant south of Boyland that was making money, and they sold to Pepsi, and they closed it down. That might be a good job, or a good opportunity for Tabor. And the last thing is, I'd like to see a college, get us, get a saladite college campus here. I'd like to approach Medicine College or Olds College and try to get something going here. I think that'll help drive the local economy, and I think there's lots of trades that we could go ahead and help develop, especially to fit our agricultural industry.
Correct. Monica?
Thank you. The best way we can is to support each other. Eighty percent of businesses in Canada are actually small business, so the way that we can support our small businesses is the most important thing. How we have done that is through the tax incentive bylaws, the commercial and the residential. We're trying to relieve the tax to, you know, incentivize that investment here in town, supporting our families by giving them facilities and opportunities to stay here. Encouraging growth within our own community is the key. You know, having those facilities and having those financial supports are what makes that important and what makes it work.
Leanne?
Well, I think Tabor has tons of opportunity for growth, but before you can have a whole bunch of people moving here, we need to have affordable housing for them, we have to have places for them to live, and we have to be able to accommodate everyone. We can't have a whole bunch of people moving in here to start businesses if there's nowhere for them to go. Most people can't find anywhere to live, you're constantly looking online for somewhere affordable to live, so just flooding the community with all these people coming in to start business and stuff, you first kind of have to have somewhere for them to go. And that's, I think, one of the priorities town has to look at, is making it affordable for everyone to live here.
Perfect, thank you. So this one wasn't put in a bunch of times, but I feel in the interest of transparency, it's a fair question to ask. So, about five years ago, the Chamber of Commerce in Tabor was given a million-dollar low-interest loan of taxpayer money to build a new building. This hasn't happened yet. What accountability should there be for this money, and what are your views on the delay? Naomi?
So, I believe that transparency and accountability are key when public money is involved. It has been five years, as you've said, and I'm not currently aware of any public updates. I don't know if any have been given or not, I personally have not seen any. I don't know, I'm uncertain where the funding for the building currently stands, so I think there should be more information provided, and perhaps there should be processes in place that if the money isn't going to be spent in a certain time, then we need to follow those steps and processes to make sure that money is being accounted for and being used properly.
Josh?
Yeah, with not really public updates, I, I'm gonna be completely honest, I, with this, I'm not completely in the know on this, but at the same time, I think it should be brought to the public, I think it should be out there, and I think people should know about this money and what their ideas are. It should be brainstormed as a community. I'm just gonna switch stance a little bit. A lot of these, there's been a lot of great answers to these questions and everything, and I think it's, how do we do these things? And what I'm gonna try and say is, I'm someone who, if you know me, I'm in the community and I'm out there, I have so many different things, I've coached, I've sat on boards, and I will go out to the people, and I wanna hear what you wanna say. I wanna know what the people wanna do, where they wanna spend this money, and that's gonna be the driver of where that money goes.
Randy?
When some of these questions come up, I wish I could change spots with some of you guys out there, because it's, we have to really think quick and off the cuff, and some of these, some of these issues haven't been out in the public for a long time. There needs to be public awareness of where this money is, there needs to be transparency on where this money is, what is being done with it, and what are the future plans for this money? There needs to be openness, and as I said before, transparency, the public needs to be made aware about these funds and the future plans for these funds. Thank you.
Carly?
Thank you. I have a little more insight, I am the Town of Tabor council rep on the Chamber of Commerce. It, yes, it was a million dollars, it was a loan, the chamber has been paying back that loan. It's also, it's tough to issue a loan to an organization and then tell them how to spend it and on what timeline. Ideally, the building would have been built on the timeline that was laid out, I don't think anybody disagrees with that, including people in the chamber. But I think they are committed to moving forward and staying within budget.
Thank you for that. Phyllis?
So, if I, if I recollect, I believe that it actually was a debenture, was it not, Carly? So, the money wasn't actually loaned from the town, it was a debenture, so money that the town would normally borrow at a lower rate of interest. And as Carly indicates, you can see in the chamber annual reports, the payments that they are making on that amount. And I know there was a news report, I guess it would be back in 2021, that showed, you know, visuals of what the building was gonna look like. From what I've seen in recent council meetings, I think some of that land has been carved out and sold to another developer, and there's some buildings potentially being built there, but I think the chamber, like anyone else, is probably chomping at the bit to get in the ground and get started, and it's always about the money and what projects come in at, but Joanne probably has better information on that, so...
We're not jumping the queue, order. Danny?
You know, I feel for the chamber here, but, you know, every council, present, you know, past, future, will support organizations. I mean, the chamber is a great organization. Yes, in 2019, pre-COVID, they made a plan. COVID hit, everything went up, plans changed. I sit on the municipal planning commission, they have a development permit that's passed, it's in their hands. You know, they have opportunities, I hope they work with other organizations to get this done, but, you know, like any council, they have to deal with the information at the time. And we will and always will support the organizations in town. This is a great organization, right? To feel, to judge them harshly based on some circumstances? I mean, it's, you know, a council in 2019 made the decision, you know, I hope the chamber well in the building.
Jack?
Thank you. You're correct, the chamber is paying back the money that was the debenture, and COVID, COVID was a disaster for it. It wasn't going to go ahead and everything was on track, but COVID hit and that screwed up everything. To be fair, I was not in favor of the new chamber building. I think what we had in town at the time, the, now the Cattlemen's Building would have been a perfect location for the Chamber of Commerce in the old Bank of Commerce Building. Things like that, I think, should have been looked at harder, so that we could utilize what buildings and properties we have for that. It's gonna be a beautiful building when it is built, I hope it's built soon, because that's pretty valuable land sitting there empty, and I'd like to see something happen quickly with it.
Joanne?
Now it's my turn, eh? I have two hats. So, five years ago, I was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I did, we had a groundbreaking ceremony, and then COVID hit. And the inflation of the building products just were too high for us to feasibly and actually be responsible, fiscally responsible in building the building at that time. So we had to pull back, and, you know, things just haven't worked out in an expedited way, but I do think that there's plans moving forward. I think it's very important to know that this isn't taxpayers' dollars that are being spent, it's a debenture, it's a loan, it's just like the gymnastics facility, so they borrowed money at a low interest rate, and they're paying it back at this time. So I hope that everyone stays tuned, and I hope that the chamber has an update for everyone, because the public needs to know.
Thank you. Dale?
After four and a half years, it goes to Dale. But anyways, in regards to this money, I think it might be a good base, if you've got the money there for the Chamber of Commerce, possibly they could incorporate it with the new dry fit center, and that might be something they could have, be in the same building, and that might be a good start to get that building going.
Monica?
Thank you. The town will always support our local businesses, and the Chamber of Commerce is such a, they're a great organization for this town, and yes, it was a loan, yes, they are paying back that loan. Unfortunately, there were some setbacks, not only COVID, but other setbacks that did happen. And so, we do hope for the future of this building, and we do want things to succeed in this town, and as much as there are things that are out of our control, we do try and do everything that we can to support them. We want everybody to succeed, we're not trying to, you know, do anything that would hurt that, and so we really wish them the best in this.
Leanne?
I personally think the chamber does lots of great things for the businesses downtown, and they are like very big supporters of our downtown core. And, yeah, things didn't go as planned, but there's always the future, you can always look forward to fixing what's been done and going ahead with it, and trying to make the best out of a bad situation, is kind of all you can do at this point.
Thank you. Okay. So our next question is, oh, cutting ahead of myself. There's a lot of questions, I tried to prioritize them. Okay. What measures do you believe should be in place to ensure professionalism and accountability for council members during meetings? Naomi, you could start us off again.
Well, there's already processes in place that are supposed to be followed by council. I think that everyone on the council just needs to be aware of those processes and make sure they're being followed, and keeping governance and operations separate. As it was already brought up, the CAO is the one that responds to council, and there should be no direction from council towards the rest of town staff.
Josh?
Just the last part of the question I missed, can you just...
I'll give you the whole thing.
Okay, perfect.
What measures do you believe should be in place to ensure professionalism and accountability for council members during meetings?
Well, I'm grateful that they're broadcasted on YouTube, I see that there's probably, on average, probably a hundred, hundred and ten views on each one, so I think the people need to be more involved, and they need to see that. I think as people watch, be more involved, our responsibility, we have to rise to that occasion as well. The way I live, I hope that I can live up to that standard of the people, but if we only talk about it when one bad thing happens or a viral moment happens, that's not good enough. I think if we wanna be better as a community, it starts from everybody, not just us eleven people up here, but everybody.
Randy?
Well, of course, mayor and council has a code of conduct that they need to follow. We also must be aware of who we represent and act accordingly, because we do represent the residents of the Town of Tabor. Being a representative of you as residents is a privilege. I consider it a privilege to act on your behalf. So we must act that way and show how important it is to be a member of council and represent you as residents.
Carly?
Unfortunately, the provincial government has repealed all council code of conducts, but that's not to say that it should be a free-for-all either. I think, most importantly, you lead by example, and hold each other accountable, and ensure you're looking at everything through the lens of, how will this be interpreted by the public? Like, could you justify your actions or the actions of one of your fellow counselors to the public if you were questioned? And if the answer is no, then you need to take a hard look... And if the answer is no, then you need to take a hard look at yourself and your colleagues.
Phyllis?
Yeah, I was gonna actually comment on the Bill 50 that was talked about earlier tonight in the mayor's form, which did actually repeal the council code of conduct. So the council code of conduct that the Town of Tabor has is no longer valid. It doesn't exist. So I mean, I think as counselors and the mayor, if I'm lucky enough to be in that position, we have to hold each other accountable. We have to make sure that we are reflecting our community the way that we should be because those council meetings are on YouTube. You know, that one second goes viral and it makes the Town of Tabor look bad. And when you make the Town of Tabor look bad, that impacts whether a company comes here or invests in our community or, you know, the citizens are happy. So you know, we have to hold each other accountable and the citizens have to hold us accountable. So ask those questions and demand those answers.
Daniel?
When we become a counselor, I was lucky enough to do it once, you get some governance training, right? You get it once, right? That's it. Start of the, start of your term, we all got an email, we're getting ready, are you ready for governance training? That's all we do, one time, right? I believe we should have more governance training. It should be annually, right? It would make us a more educated counselor. We all come here from different backgrounds, you know? Some of us never worked in administration and stuff like that, right? So governance training and leaning on administration to help us navigate being the right counselor for this great town. Thanks.
Jack?
Thank you. This Bill 50, I don't really understand the logic behind that, taking away accountability of council and mayor. It's, we all make mistakes, but we learn from them, which I think is very important. We have to be very diligent that we are representing the Town of Tabor and that when people see us, we've got to be seen in a good light. I think councils I've sat on and previous other councils, they do hold each other accountable. If something's not going right, there is conversations and talk about it. So in the future, you know, without, with this Bill 50, we're going to have to be very, very diligent on how we act. Thank you.
Joanne?
So as counselor, I'm just holding myself to the highest that I can be in maintaining honesty, being transparent in my decision making. I'm constantly asking questions when I, before I make my decisions. I'm also supporting administration in providing more information. The more training we get, the better we will become in our position. So I believe training will also help us act responsibly in the meetings also.
Bill 50 is gone. There's nothing saying the town council can't, the new town council can't impose some guidelines or set out some guidelines for the new counselors to live by. I do think that's important and I think Randy's correct. We do owe it to the people of Tabor to have the highest, hold us, to operate with the highest standards possible and to try to be as transparent as we can.
Thank you. Every person lives by their own code of conduct and I think it's important to have that integrity with your, with yourself. It has been an honor to serve on town council and I always try and uphold my own personal integrity in every meeting. And then my actions then reflect back on the town, but then they do reflect back on me personally. And so I am always keeping that back in the back of my mind. Like, how are my actions then reflective on you as the town? And what does that mean? You know, so I try and be honest and be accountable for every decision that I make. Thank you.
Leah?
Well, first off, training would be huge, especially when you don't have a clue what you're doing. Or you're just getting thrown into something, right? If you don't know and you're not going into anything with the proper training, you can't do the proper job, right? So going forth, I feel like you do need to take some training. Maybe there should be more training in place to help people with that. And same thing, just acting the way you'd want everyone to perceive you in this, in this town, right? You want people to see you as the best you can be, not your worst, right? That lives with them for a long time if you screw up. So yeah, just basically training and teaching everything, how to, like, teaching everyone how everything works and how to do things properly.
Thank you. So there's probably time for one more question, as long as everybody agrees to keep it a little bit short. There was a question that was asked multiple times. I'm unaware of the issue that's at hand there. Maybe somebody who's existing on council can enlighten us. But the question is, what is your position on balancing development opportunities with preserving green space in Tabor? Naomi, you could start us off. Don't worry, we don't need the backstory from you.
So I believe this is talking about, at the special council meeting that was on September 23rd, there was a question put forward if there would be a policy put in place to protect the green space in Tabor because there was some green space, to my understanding, on the south of Tabor that was supposed to be protected and then was, was taken away from being a park into something else. So I believe that's what the question was referring to, would be my best understanding. I don't think it's a terrible idea to have a policy in place to have green spaces in town. We have lots of youth in town. We have a very large youth population. Tabor is one of the populations in Alberta that has the highest number of youth under 15. So we need spaces for those young people to be, so to protect that space. We're expanding as a community, but we have lots of space to expand out, not necessarily taking away spaces in town.
Josh?
Yeah, I agree with that as well. The more spaces for kids to have and get out is good. We need more opportunities. I look at the different parks around town. I live on the northwest side of town and the parks there, the green spaces are used. People go out there and they, whether they're playing basketball or soccer, throwing a frisbee, they use those green spaces. I'm all for preserving those green spaces, but one of the things that I'm more for is staying true to your word. If those people were promised that green space, we have to stay to it or there has to be, the people who were promised have to be in on that meeting. It can't just be a majority bullying those people. It has to be the people who are promised, they have to have their word into it as well.
Randy?
Well, our green spaces must be protected. We need spaces for our families and youth to enjoy, for those who visit our town to enjoy. Just as a fact, Confederation Park was donated by a family years and years ago to the Town of Tabor to always be a green space, never to be converted over to residential or anything like that. So we do need to protect our green spaces. They're very vital to any town or municipality. Thank you.
Carly?
Thank you. I'm guessing that this question is referring to Ernest Meyer's Park on the south side. And yes, that green space was taken away after careful consideration to build housing. Part of that decision was that there's a large field that's directly adjacent to that. So while yes, it's true that you are taking away green space, there will be park space maintained within that development as well as there's a large field that is directly adjacent. So it's not like we're paving over every green space in town, certainly not. Like Randy mentioned, maintaining Confederation Park, like, once you, if you took that away, you would never get it back. And it's such a beautiful amenity right in the heart of downtown. So if you take away green space, it needs to be carefully thought out and balanced with the need.
Phyllis?
Yeah, so under the Municipal Government Act, when a developer is creating a subdivision or designing residential space, there's a requirement to contribute 10% of that property into municipal reserve. And that has to be developable land. It can't just be like the crap corners on the edge of the development that have a coal mine or whatever. And so the reason for that is because you're building beautiful neighborhoods and you're building places that people want to live. So in order to then get rid of that park, you have to go through a whole process that's extensive, or it should be. And that wasn't respected in a couple of cases here where, you know, land was sold and transferred, sent up to land titles without going through those processes. So you need to respect the fact that those people purchased those homes to enjoy those spaces as they were constructed and they've been robbed of that. So we can build more housing, which I know is necessary, but not there.
Daniel?
Thanks. I don't think you're going to get anybody up here that says tear down parks, obviously. Preserve green spaces, right? You know, a council decision to turn Ernest Meyer Park into affordable housing was thought out. With the amount of economic development we have out in that area, we need housing. A council prior that thought about housing, built the Meadows. You know, we already had a cheer here that maybe it didn't work out the greatest, right? So I mean, the council makes a decision with everything in front of them. We're a growing town. Futures or current councils are not here to tear down green spaces. They're here to make decisions to help this town flourish economically. You know, we have the communities in bloom. They're kicking it out there and doing very well. But yes, green spaces are important.
Jack?
Thank you. Green spaces are very important. Confederation Park or that land that was donated to the town, I think expanded all the way to the Park Road. The hospital's built on that. All of the heritage, or not heritage estates, but the development around the golf course. All of that was built on donated land that was going to be green space. Progress comes and things have to change. I think underutilized green, green space such as the Ernest Meyer's Park there, the opportunity was there for low income housing apartments so that people who need, need places to live would be able to afford it. There's a lot of jobs in that area with the no frills and the other businesses that have come up there. Would be within walking distance. But it was a very hard decision to make that because of the green space. Our trout pond is fantastic. We're building more green space, so progress is hard to stop. Thank you.
Joanne?
So it was a tough decision. There was consultation with the public. You know, there were a few people that showed up in opposing the development, but not enough for us to be swayed. There was also discussion that the money that was coming from this sale was going to go back into parks, so it can't be used for anything else. Would I do it again? Not sure. But we made the best decision moving forward because of the need of the low income. It's in helping support that school, helping support the development of that area. And so that's how we based our decision.
Dale?
I was disappointed that the town, or the town council did vote in favor, but I thought it was a green space. I thought that, I believe there's other spaces that we could use within the town limits for affordable housing. So I would think I would have waited, probably voted, I would have voted against it at that time. So anyways, I do think green spaces are important. I think if you want to go ahead and, you know, if you look at mental health and fitness and all those things, green spaces help. So you need to go ahead and say what you mean and do what you say. And in this case, you know, we can all say, well, we, we advocate a fitness, overall fitness and stuff like that. Well, lessen these places or take them away. There's less chance that your society will be fit.
Monica?
Thank you. As you heard from previous council members, it was a really tough decision. You're outweighing affordable housing in areas that you already have infrastructure and it's really hard to find those areas in town where then you don't have to put the infrastructure into the ground because that is very expensive. So looking at other areas around town where there aren't those facilities that currently exist are very few and far between. And so then you're looking at, well, we need affordable housing in town, so then where are we going to put it? You know, so you're trying to balance the needs of the people in the town with what is in front of you. And it's not always a perfect picture, unfortunately. And so that was why we made that tough decision. Preserving green spaces is very important and we are trying to do all that we can in other areas and protecting those places.
Leah?
Yeah, I agree. Green spaces are very important in our town. They're very well utilized. Anytime you go to Confederation Park, you see people down there using them. You see people using the walking paths all around town, all the green areas, even by the hospital beside the helicopter landing. You see people playing catch and ball out there. So honestly, I think it is very important to keep our green spaces so people have places to be active.
Well, that ends the Q and A portion. Again, thank you all for taking the time to be here, weigh in on these questions. Thank you to everybody here that may be submitted questions. I apologize if your question didn't get asked. I, I got lots of them. Feel free, I'm sure any one of these will, any one of these potential counselors or current counselors would be happy to take your questions one-on-one. We're going to take a quick five minutes here. We're going to reset, get things set up for the MD portion and I'm going to try and find a stool. And I'm going to try and find a stool. I think I got one. Do you need one? So if we could get everybody from the M D council that's here to speak, if you could go to the back corner, we're just going to draw some quick numbers for speaking order. Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the M D portion of tonight's event. Obviously, we have four individuals to hear from today. So I will introduce them in the order that they drew speaking selection. So first off, David Torrey. Thank you for being here. Ben Elfring, thank you for being here. Tamara Mianega, thank you, and Brian Hildebrand, thank you. So we are going to operate this in a very similar way as what we did with the mayoral and with the town councillor positions. We're going to give everybody two minutes to give your opening remarks. We will move into question or Q and A portion of the event. And that's where I will ask a laundry list of questions that we were sent. And then we will give everybody a couple of minutes to wrap up. So given that we have far less people to get our way through. So we'll go ahead and start with David Torrey. You want to restart that clock?
Hello. All right. Well, it's nice to be here tonight. I'm very new to the whole idea of politics, but I've been interested in it a long time. My great grandfather, who bought the ranch that we live on in Grassy Lake, was an M D councilman. I don't even know what year it was, but a long time ago, we've been on the ranch over 100 years. And so I always kind of had it in the back of my mind that I would do it as well. I was named after him and I run the ranch now. And so we've been in Grassy Lake forever. My grandfather went to high school there. My father graduated from there. I graduated from there. My sons both graduated from there. And my grandkids go to school in Grassy Lake. And so we care about the town of Grassy Lake a lot. And the demographics of the town have changed dramatically all through those different eras when my grandfather and my father and when I was there and now my grandkids. But we love the town of Grassy Lake and it's been amazing how, when I was in high school there, it was a much smaller town. And it was a few retired people that lived there. And maybe a few young families and now, and there was a lot of rundown, broken down homes in the town of Grassy Lake. And now there's all these beautiful homes. Every home has been repaired and fixed. And we just have a lot of wonderful Mennonite friends that live in the town and the businesses that are there. And I love those people. I love the farmers in the area. I work with, in a few different industries. We're in cattle. We're in row crops. We do potatoes as well. Just started into potatoes. We're also in construction and in the gravel business. And so we are interested in all aspects of business in this area. And so we have some understanding of the issues that are in all of those different industries.
And that's time.
We'd like to, we'd like to be involved.
Sounds good. Thank you. Ben.
Thank you for putting this on. Really appreciate it. I'm seeking the support to become councillor of Division Four for the Municipal District of Tabor. The following summary of my concerns regarding the M D of Tabor's council management, transparency, and decisions regarding taxation, municipal operations, municipally owned land, and I, and will, that I will correct if elected. Tax burden and spending concerns. Property taxes have risen sharply over the last four years. Revenue required to meet municipal expenses have grown from 14.5 million in 2017 to 19.4 million in 2025. Without new or improved services, the M D has spent, or has a spending problem, not a revenue problem. Administration inefficiencies. Municipal administration has been expanded to three new senior managers and support staff. This has not translated into better services, only higher costs. Gravel resource mismanagement. The M D owns large gravel resources and have purchased a $2.2 million gravel crusher 15 years ago. Unexpectedly, a gravel crusher contract awarded without transparency or apparent council resolution raises questions about cost and council efficiency or secrecy. Municipal lands. The M D owns over 80,000 acres of land and inadvertent invaluable community resource. The current council plans to break 24 sections of grassland, which is native grassland, for irrigation, borrowing $6 million with unclear agreements and potent, and potent impact. Sorry.
That's all right. Tamara.
Thank you. So I am Tamara Mianega. I'm the incumbent for Division Four and I am asking your support. So I'm going to change up my introduction a little bit. Initially, I was going to tell you that I'm this servant of the people, that I am happy to pick up the garbage and work alongside anyone, but I'm going to defend the council of the day. So the $5 million increase since 2017, anyone who has paid the grocery bill knows that that percentage is manageable. It's not ideal. No one wants anything to go up, but buy a bag of groceries and see what you take home. On the municipal lands, so you're right, we have 75,000 acres of grassland. The last, in 2021, that amount of land generated $52,418 for the municipality. Now, that does not include the oil revenue, which some does go to the M D, but others go to the leaseholders. So in a time where we are trying to find economic efficiencies, we had to look at alternatives. The 24 acres, that makes up, or 24 quarters with the B R A D, the Scope Reservoir Project, it's what it's being named, it has the opportunity to raise a significant portion of money. Right now, it raises about $2,000. 24 acres, I would think that people of the day would be disgusted with us for not optimizing our asset. This council has been open. It is transparent and I can justify any decision that we've made. And I will continue to work hard for Division Four and the M D of Tabor.
Thank you. Brian.
I'm Brian Hildebrand. I farm south of Grassy Lake on the place that my grandfather bought in 1928. I am seeking reelection as Division Three councillor. The M D of Tabor is a wonderful place to live, work, play, and build a business. And we want to keep it that way. We have amazing resources, including our land, water, growing climate, business and municipal partnerships, and mostly, most importantly, the people that live in the region. In the last four years, a lot of good things have happened in the M D of Tabor. We've seen expansion in food processing facilities. The twinning of Highway Three has become a reality. Construction continues. Housing development has been a boom in the municipality. We're building, the M D is building more lots in Grassy Lake. Haze and Enchant are selling lots at a rapid pace and this is a problem of growth. But in order to do that, the municipality needs to provide infrastructure and needs to generate revenue. And yes, the budget has grown. But where are we going to get that, that revenue? And we need to manage our resources responsibly. When we are getting a pittance of what the land is worth, it is not responsible. Municipal lands owned by the M D of Tabor, by the M D's assessment, was worth market value somewhere around $350 million. And the revenue gained by it, as councillor Mianega said, was $50,000. We have to do better on that. Otherwise, taxes will increase. Residential taxes have increased by 7, 11, 9 percent. That is not sustainable.
Time. Thank you. So we're going to move on into the Q and A portion. So again, we did ask for questions to be submitted ahead of time. So we have gotten a lot. So we're going to sit here and we'll go through as many as we can in the time that we're allotted. Everybody will have two minutes again to respond, given that we're dealing with a few less people than we were in the last session. We're going to give you a little extra time. So we might as well just jump to the question that was repeated the most. How do you see the recent changes to grazing lease agreements impacting young farmers and ranchers? And what role should the M D play in supporting the next generation of producers? We'll start with David.
I feel like I'm just starting to get up to speed on all of these issues with the leases. And so if I am elected, I'll definitely learn a lot more about it. But I have been talking to some of our leaseholders. I do have some lease as well, just one quarter section of M D lease. And I think everybody that has leases is willing to work on making it more, more fair. I think they all realize that it's been a very good deal. And so I think leaseholders are willing to come to the table. And I think we just need to listen to each other, get in the room and work on the issues. And so I think if the, if the, all the rules stay in place that have been changed, it will become very difficult to hold on to grassland in the M D of Tabor. And that may be the best use for the land, or it may not be, but that's something that needs to be discussed.
Thank you. Ben.
I was on council when we got all of this tax recovery land back. That was in the 2016, 2015, 2010. We got it so much back every year. And basically, at the time, the government of the day did not want to give it back to us, the tax recovery land. They deemed was sensitive land, especially the grassland. And we basically gave them our word that this land would not be broken. And it would stay as grazing land and as native prairie where native prairie is. Some of that land has been broken. We said if it comes to, we would allow it being broken again, but it's a council decision. And, but this land, this 24 sections of land is virgin native prairie. So I think it should be stayed, staying in the ranchers' hands. They've done a very good job over all the years. And personally, I see no reason for it to change. There's three, four generations of ranchers, farmers that have had this land. It's part of their operation and to break this up is going to break up family farms.
Thank you. Tamara.
So how do I see the future of grazing leases to be used for future ranchers? Well, these last 20 years while the M D had tax recovery land, there was many other municipalities who received the land at the same time. They chose to sell it. They sold it at a really cheap price and people turned around and farmed it. There's, or sold it, making profit off money which was there for the municipality. The M D of Tabor recognized that no one is making more land, that it's a resource that's available for everyone to benefit. So for 20 years, they paid 70 cents an acre to have cattle on that land. So if you are to evaluate what grazing lease goes for now, it is nowhere in comparison. So the rate that we have set for this current policy is $26, still far from market, far. $100 is what the tendered stuff has been going for. So do I have value in the grazers, what they've done? Absolutely. So that is why the current policy actually sets aside community pastures. They have it now for time eternity with the motion that was made. They can renew every 10 years. The other leases, they will be there for five years, giving people the opportunity to perhaps buy, to perhaps change use, or just to renegotiate the price. There's no for sale sign on all that land, so it's a misnomer. But it is so that other folks can have an opportunity. But the word I heard is to be destined, to have your own destiny. This allows those ranchers to look after the land that they deem as theirs and buy it or set the right price.
Thank you. Brian.
So these municipally owned lands are owned by the M D of Tabor. As a whole, as a collective. And the 7,900 residents of the M D of Tabor need to benefit from that land. All of the residents. And that includes grazing associations. And that includes grazing associations. It includes current leaseholders, but it also includes the rest of the residents. When the rate is far below market, someone has to make up the difference. And that ends up being the ratepayers, the residential, agricultural, the industrial ratepayers. That is not fair to anyone. The, the lands have to be able to, well, they need to be beneficial to everyone. When, who has the opportunity to benefit from it? The new rate is $5 an acre. The previous was 70 cents an acre. But the open market tendered rate that the MD is receiving is $30 an acre. So even the new rate is in excess of an 80% subsidy. Who is paying that? The ratepayers as a whole, the residents of a whole are paying that. They're paying for it through reduced services, from reduced municipal capacity, and through increased taxes. Where is the fairness in that? We need to give everyone the opportunity to benefit from this resource that we as a collective own.
Thank you. So as a bit of a follow-up to that question, it's a bit of a two-parter. How do you propose to increase revenue for the MD without raising taxes? We will start in the same order. David?
That's definitely a tricky question, but I think if we make the MD of Tabor an attractive place for businesses to locate, and if we can try to build residential, there's high demand for residential housing. Our tax base will grow without needing to increase individuals' taxes. We're looking at building a concrete plant in Grassy Lake on industrial land. We need to make these opportunities for other businesses attractive so that they come and they build here, and then they pay taxes here. And if we can get affordable housing into the different communities in the MD, that increases our tax base, and so the, each individual family doesn't have to pay more taxes. We actually are a bigger MD. We have more people here. And business, the one thing that, I mean, because I also involved in potatoes and, and intensive agriculture, besides the, the cattle side of things, we get some amazing deals on the potato side. None of our potato buildings are taxed. None of our big shops are taxed. But industry buildings are taxed. If, if I build a concrete plant, we pay a lot of taxes to keep a business going like that. And so maybe our leaseholders have been getting too good of a deal, but I think if I can build expensive potato storage buildings and get into intensive, almost industrial-type work, processing potatoes, washing potatoes, and not have to pay any tax on those big buildings, it's not just the leaseholders that have been getting a good deal. A lot of agriculture's been getting a good deal. And so I think it all needs to be looked at, on how we can make it all more fair. Irrigated farmland is at a very good tax rate. That should be looked at. Anyway, ways of making it more fair without increasing it to all the individuals.
Ben?
Well, I, I think the MD has to look internally how we're spending the tax dollars. There's, to me, I have seen a lot of wasted money. The other way to increase or support less taxes is through agribusiness. Try and promote agribusiness, all types of business in the MD, housing. There's, it's, it's wide open, so.
Tamara?
So to increase economic development, whether it's agribusiness or a plant of some kind, is first and foremost. The MD has prioritized staffing for economic development. And some may see, well, that's wasteful, but we actually need to pound the pavement to let people know that we have this amazing hotspot. We have intersection of the highway, the highway's being twinned. We live in the Canada Premier Food Corridor, and it's being promoted. The promotion of the MD of Tabor is happening quite naturally. And so bringing in those assessed properties will make a difference. Looking at other alternatives, which the MD has begun, and finding ways for efficiencies. The 15-year-old gravel crusher is at end of life, costing us upwards of a half a million a year to repair. We can't afford to buy a new one. So we're looking at other services like contracting out gravel crushing. We have the gravel. We didn't have the operators. We don't have a machine that's functional anymore. So we are looking at alternative ways to deliver services which will help reduce costs and lessen taxes.
Brian?
Well, if we're not going to increase taxes, we need to have better utilization of our resources, municipal resources. All of them, including the municipally-owned lands, but also the, the rolling resources that we have as well. And so the MD has started on a program here of running graders, or running operators four days on, four days off. And by running a longer day, fewer days with the operators, a longer day, the graders should have more blade downtime and get more done in a day. We need to do things like that, that increase the efficiency of the equipment that we have. As far as growth, advocating for the Highway 320 and getting that on the go is, is great for encouraging growth in the region. We also need to collaborate with our municipal partners and work on having the infrastructure in place to provide those agri-food businesses that want to come here. Our water, our wastewater, needs to be ready for those people to come. Housing lot development, we need to have lots ready for the people to live in, but we need to be ready for those things. And, and not build it and they will come, but be ready to build and respond when they do want to come.
Thank you. So again, kind of staying in that vein, because that seems to be the, the topic for consideration, is that the next question that was posed to us multiple times was, do you think the MD council has been transparent in its dealings over the last four years, including on grazing leases and irrigation projects? David, you'd start us off again.
I've been a little busy doing all of the things that we do. I have had some great interactions with the, with the staff at the MD of Tabor. I have a great relationship with the people there. And, but I haven't been heavily involved in a lot of the council meetings. So I would be passing judgment without a lot of evidence. I hope to be involved and get to know more about it. I know that there's definitely been some concerns in discussions I've had with the leaseholders that a lot of the things that, that happened in that process were not, were not clear. That there were definitely clauses that were changed in different contracts through the years that they didn't know were removed. So I think there's some things that could be looked at. And, but I, I need to do the investigation and do my reading and, and then come to understand it. Because I feel like everybody in the MD is valuable. I think all the different industries are valuable, and we need to listen. And we just, we need to talk it through. It's part of the process, and so I'm excited to be involved.
Ben?
I was not at any of these meetings. They're basically closed doors, as far as I know. It, it's, it really concerns me breaking up native prairie grass, 24 quarters. It's, to me, it's not the right thing to do environmentally. You're taking land away from leaseholders. And yeah, it's going to make a lot of money, but $6 million ain't going to cut it. You got to build roads. You got to build infrastructure. How much is that going to cost? You got to fence it. At $6,000 probably per quarter, and I'm probably a little low on that. It's, this thing hasn't been thought through. And it hasn't been talked through, especially to the people of the MD of Tabor. I've talked to lots of leaseholders, and they keep, the Old Man Grazing Association, and they talk and talk to council, and they fall, it falls on deaf ears. They've got their mind made up. This is what's going to happen. And it's not right for the residents and the ratepayers of the MD of Tabor.
Tamara?
So do I think the MD is transparent on the irrigation and lease process? So the BRAD approached the MD of Tabor. We had a closed-door discussion to see if we thought it would be even a feasibility, an, an option for us. Then we had a motion on the table to investigate further. Then we had a meeting on the parameters, committee of the whole, MD council, they're open to anybody, and MD council meetings are recorded. The decision to move ahead as quick as we did on the 24 quarters, BRAD had the water available, the leases were coming to an end. It was the right time with the right opportunity. And anyone who's in business knows those are factors that play a role in it. As far as leases, and it wasn't closed. There is public notification of the borrowing bylaw, and our council demanded that if we are going to do this project, the project had to fund the debenture. It was not to be used for taxpayer operational dollars. The leases, we have been working on this lease. When I got on council eight years ago, they said the biggest thing you're going to have to deal with is these leases that are due in February 26, because they left the rate the same for 70 cents an acre. And they didn't change it. So you better figure out, because they've been told there will be a change. So we held public meetings and multiple locations multiple times. It was transparent and open. You trust the seven people who come to the table to make the decision. Some couldn't be there because of pecuniary interest. There was nothing closed door about it. And I will stand by that right till the very end.
Thank you. So we will switch gears a little bit. Sorry, Brian, I apologize.
You're not the only one that was nervous. I was so nervous on the way, getting ready for this, I just will cut myself shaving.
Well, I think all my blood's in my feet at the moment, so that's my excuse. Sorry, Brian, go ahead.
So do I think the process was transparent? I think it was as transparent as it could be. When it comes to leases, there is actually a, a push from someone friendly with the leaseholders' interests, not to hold the, the discussions in committee of the whole, which are public meetings, but to workshop them behind closed doors. I pushed against that. I did not want it workedshopped. I wanted it to be held in a meeting where the public could come. And so they were in committee of the whole. The committee of the whole meetings are advertised, they are public. The minutes are, are available after they've been approved the next meeting. One thing that I will commit to though for next term if reelected is that committee of the whole meetings are recorded and livestreamed. I think that is something that will bring on more transparency to the process. The irrigation project, as soon as we were able to, it became public. There are things that you cannot do with negotiations, but as soon as it was able, it was public. The debate was public. The motions are public. We are following the process for the borrowing bylaw. It's had first reading, and now the public engagement process is open. One comment was made, and I want to challenge a source on it, that clauses were changed. Which ones?
Well, I think the auto-renew policy, or the auto-renew clauses were, were mentioned specifically then when they resigned leases in the past, that they didn't realize that those clauses had been taken, taken out. Like you say, I haven't been heavily involved, but that's the, that's my goal as I come into this election, is to, to learn the issues and to listen. It, it seems like most of the lease stuff has already been pushed through. I'm not even sure that this is going to be a part of what we deal with.
Sorry, and I'm just going to interject quickly here, because we don't want to turn this into a debate if we can avoid it, so. But thank you, we appreciate the clarity. So again, I will just, in the interest of clarity, mention that I did rephrase some of the questions that we received to make them more policy-focused, so that we're going to answer a couple of those now. So how should councillors balance following established policies with advocating for change when they disagree with the issue at hand?
Well, my goal would be to go and listen to the people that are in my area and ask them, and have, you know, town hall meetings and try to understand what the people need, and then see how that can either work with the existing policies or if things need to be changed, then if a majority of the people that I work, you know, represent, want change, then we push for change.
Thank you. Ben?
What was the question? I can't see it on here.
No problem. So how should councillors balance following established policies with advocating for change when they disagree with the policy at hand?
I still can't hear.
You can't hear it?
No. Could you put it on the screen?
Do you want me to slow down a little bit? Okay. So how should councillors balance following, or sorry, how should councillors balance following established policies with advocating for change when they disagree?
Do you stick with the policy as it is, or advocate for change? And how do you decide? Any policy you say going forward?
Any policy, you'd have to go through them, like, oh, there it is.
Existing versus change, yeah.
Well, there has to be some change on some existing policies. Grazing leases, cultivated land, yes, it should be brought more to the going rate. 70 cents an acre. Usually you go by animal management units. Grassland, you have dry years, you have good years. Yeah, sometimes you're going to make a good dollar. Sometimes you're not going to put any cattle on that land, lack of water. So you got to take all of this into consideration. Policies in administration, there's got to be some big changes in there. Buying equipment, all of a sudden, the MD buys seven graders this year. They haven't bought one since 2017, 2018. They run the wheels off of all the graders. There was two laying in the shop. Roads aren't getting graded. Five years ago, seven years ago, graders were $300, $350,000. Now they're $600, $650,000. My calculations for the depreciation that we lost and the increase in graders, we just blew a million bucks. And stuff like that has to change. The fire haul in, in Enchant, $800,000 shortfall on their calculations and on their budget. What was going on? Why is, why is this shortfall? Like $800,000 is a lot of money, and blowing a million bucks on graders, and you buy seven in one year, which is crazy.
Tamara?
So I, I actually feel bad that I follow Ben every time. So maybe we should reverse the order, because kind of is rough. So the years that we didn't, there was two years that we didn't buy a grader. And it was COVID. We couldn't get access to them. The economy was in the tank. We really managed the budget as tightly as we could. Then we were buying graders two at a time. And at that time, there was a brand that I won't name that didn't work out for us. We did have some lemons, must have been Monday or Friday builds. And so we made some decisions to buy five graders one year, and now we're on a sequencing program. But as far as policies, we have the ability. Every council meeting, we have a, a sequence of policies that come before us for review of existing policies. And anytime any councillor has an issue with a policy, we advocate for change. So the beauty of the MD government is we analyze, we reflect, we get more information. And then some things need to be changed, not unlike the grazing leases. But we also did it with fire bans. We do it with calcium. Used to be we subsidized people who got calcium in front. Now it's a cost recovery. It was interesting to me how at the time, whose places were getting calcium and managed? We said, no more of that. You pay for the service you receive when it's over and above what the general person receives. So there's ample opportunity to review policies. We have a sequence, but at any time, someone could bring forward a policy they want discussed.
Brian.
So one thing that council and administration have worked together in this last term is to review all the policies that the MD has on a schedule. So we don't have a policy that hasn't been unvisited for an extended period of time, 10 years, 15 years. And so kind of working through that in a logical way, just to make sure that our policies stay relevant. And as Tamra had said, there's a portion in every council agenda where councillors can bring things forward, questions and motions. It is up to the councillors to engage with the citizens, with the residents and see what's working and what isn't working for them. And if it's not working, we need to look at it and change it. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. But that's 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 what we've been doing.
Perfect, thank you. So, oh, there's a lot of good questions. All right. What is your view on the current farm mill rate? And how should the tax burden be distributed between different sectors in the MD? And we will change the order up. Brian, why don't you start us off?
You bet. So the farm rate is has been frozen since 19, sometime sometime in the 1990s. And that's a challenge that we are having with with council. Agricultural buildings are not taxable. And that is provincial legislation. It's nothing that the MDF Tabor can do about that. We have lobbied to get that changed, but it is provincial legislation and that is out of our hands. When you, being that those rates have been frozen for 20 years or more, there is a disparity in the taxation rate between irrigation and dry land. The it's one and a half to one between irrigation and dry land. As we all know, the value of land is not one and a half to one. It's more like four to one, four and a half to one. So when taxation is increased on all farms, it increases the disparity even more. And if we get to a fair rate or what someone might consider fair for row crop and high intensity production, it is going to be abusive for dry land and grazing operators. So we have to be careful how we deal with that. We, as a council, we're lobbying for that that change so that we could somehow tax more for the high use areas. An irrigation farm could, you know, on an annual basis, average, you know, nine, 10 ton an acre. Dry land farm, ton and a half an acre. The amount of services needed for that disparity, it doesn't make up with taxes. So that is why the MDF Tabor must find alternate sources of revenue to pay for the resources that are needed for the high intensity production.
Thank you. We'll just work our way to Tamra next.
So my view on mill rate where the MD uses the taxes equally. So really, I think the question is about agriculture. Everyone who is at the current council table earned their living from farming. And the option on the table was always, how can we separate irrigation, taxation and dry land? We went to the minister. We've lobbied with our neighbors. And the answer has been, there's no way to separate the two. Well, we think we have an option. And there's not one farmer in the room who will like this. It is if you are an irrigator. We're looking at how the County of Lethbridge did head tax, looking at can we tax irrigation? Can we find a commonality that County of Lethbridge did with head tax and went all the way to the Supreme Court with it? That we could look at irrigated acres and tax it? I actually don't love the idea, but I think the disparity is so vast that the government of Alberta needs to look at it. So I really am struggling with how to figure this out. They need to separate dry land and irrigation. We shouldn't be having to run a case to the Supreme Court. And if you, the leaseholders are many people in the municipality, but the irrigators are far more, so they will let their voice be known. We need to look at alternative options. If you own an acreage or you own a business in the MDF Tabor, the taxation is incredible. That needs to be frozen.
David.
I'm excited to learn more about these issues, but it is it is clear that irrigated farms, any intensive part of the farming side of gets an amazing deal. I was actually shocked when I started looking at building new buildings that I wasn't going to have to pay any additional tax. I was surprised at that and and of course I was happy about that. But now that you look at all the issues, you realize that somehow we have to run the MD. We have to have the money that we need to take care of the roads and the water systems, all the different things that need to be done. So I think it's something we're going to have to investigate and see if we can change. The argument that that the dry land doesn't, you know, abuse the roads because of the tons also would suggest that leaseholders that own cattle are also very easy on the roads. And now I think it needs to be looked at. We're looking at developing a bunch of irrigated land in the MB. And I'm not necessarily against that. I know it needs to be looked at, but I need, I know it needs to be, that we need to listen to all the sides. So now we're going to increase a whole bunch of irrigated land that's going to be much harder on the roads and not have to pay taxes on all of that new irrigated, you know, if they build more potato storage for all of this new land, it's not going to have to pay its share of the taxes for that new development. So I don't think that's fair either, that we somehow develop a bunch of intensive agriculture. Like, you know, I live near feedlots and a lot of potato growers. And all of that traffic is very hard on the roads. And so if I don't think the lease guys out in the in the North Country were very hard on the roads out there. And so I think we just need to look at it and try to come up with something that's fair. We need, it needs to make sense. Maybe we do need more irrigated land. I just think we need to look at all the options.
Ben.
Well, on our taxes, roughly 35, 40% is education tax. And that goes right to Edmonton, which personally, I think they should collect their own taxes. But there is a way that the County of Lethbridge had done it with the cattle and put on a head tax on cattle for haul use or haul roads that they have out there. I don't know how much revenue that's brought in, but I know there's a pile of cattle in the County of Lethbridge. Maybe that's something to look at on irrigated land. With the crop rotation, it's just not one or two roads that get beat up. It's all the roads get beat up in a three or four year rotation. One year you have potatoes, the next year you have sugar beets, the next year you have silage, all heavy, heavy loads. So maybe that's something that we should look at on irrigated land.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to do one more, just because it was, again, asked a couple of times in different ways. And then we will move on to a final two minute speech from everybody and we'll wrap the night up. How will you ensure fair and respectful representation of all of the cultural groups that exist in the MD? And we'll start that with Ben.
I didn't hear it. It's just echoey.
Oh, yeah.
I'll just wait till Rick puts it up.
We might be a while. Oh, Tamra, go ahead if you're ready.
So how can we ensure cultural representation at the MD council table? Well, I think first and foremost is recreation and we've prioritized funds for that. We've improved ball diamonds, we're supporting our parks. We've set aside money in the new budget for the Vauxhall Rink. We support what happens in Tabor recreationally. Grassy Lake has had some development. So do we have all people at the table? Not necessarily, but I would say every one of the councillors has friends, works with, recreates with different folks in our municipality. So I feel that we hear their concerns. It's quite easy to make sure everyone's voices are represented on a business basis. We have so much activity from the Low German Mennonite population that they have made a tremendous impact on what's happening in the municipality. So we have adapted to make sure that their needs are met and we'll continue to do that. This past council, and I'm sure the future council will look at everyone who has, who lives and works in our municipality, that is not a big concern for me. I feel that we are mature, understanding of a multicultural, multi diverse municipality.
We'll just work our way down the table. Is that okay now, Ben?
Yes, I agree. We should support all of our communities, whether it's sports, activities, schools. It's very important that everybody has a say and everybody basically enjoys the community, so.
David.
This is the part of being involved in politics that I'm the most excited about. It's just our community is full of wonderful people and the mix has been changing and is continuing to change. I work with a lot of the Low German Mennonites. I work with a lot of Filipinos. We're starting to get a growing Filipino community. They mostly live in the towns, but starting to be many of them working out in the MD. And it's exciting because we, we're a wonderful place to live. Like we're one of the most wonderful places in the world to live as far as safety and opportunity. It can be very cold here in the winter, but it actually isn't that bad because of the beautiful Chinooks. And and just the opportunities in in this hotspot is great. And so having all these wonderful people here, I'm excited to visit with them and and to try to represent them all. And I think the biggest thing is just listening to people, listening to and trying to imagine what it's like to be in their shoes and and take everybody seriously. And and I really do, I love my neighbors and I love the people that I work with. And they're all amazing people and anyway, so I'm excited about it. And I think I think we will continue to treat people fairly in the MDF Tabor, yeah.
Thank you. Brian.
Well, it's important to be engaged with everyone within the, within our communities. They all have their own unique concerns and they need to be addressed. I think back of how Grassy Lake was when I was in high school in the 1980s. And there was 200 people there. I think you might have had to count a couple of dogs and cats to get to 200, but that's what Grassy Lake was in the 1980s. And it was, with the last person to leave, please turn out the lights, was kind of the sentiment of the town at the time or the village at the time. And it has grown. And now there's 1,000 people living in that town. It's a vibrant, growing, wonderful community. And the changes there have been amazing. You look at how the community hall is being used by different groups. The volunteerism with our fire department. The engagement with with the new, the new residents to the community is amazing. And I welcome it and it is an amazing thing to see.
Okay, thank you. So we will go in reverse order for our closing remarks with how we started. So Brian, you get to start us off.
Well, in in closing, I think one of the biggest issues facing the MDF Tabor is how we manage our resources in a responsible way that's respectful to the residents and the ratepayers. And whether it's our equipment, which has been a concern that's been raised here, whether it's our lease lands, whether it's irrigation development, it has to be done in a way that's respectful for the residents and and our and our ratepayers. The, those 80,000 acres of land is something that we cannot ignore. It is more than an elephant in the room. It is something that is, it's legacy changing for the MDF Tabor. You think about that, a resource worth hundreds of millions of dollars. Somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 per resident. That's a significant change if people have that in their pockets. You think about that. It is amazing. And this this next council is going to have to be very respectful of all the residents that they can benefit from the resources that we have.
Thank you. Tamra.
So serving the MDF Tabor has been an honor. My hair turned gray during these eight years, so it was tough. There wasn't always easy times, but I can guarantee you that we asked hard questions. We demanded options. We looked at the fiscal opportunities. We didn't approve every project. Have there been some things that we could have done better? Yes, but we have certainly involved the public more so than I've ever seen. We are considerate of what's going on in the hamlets. We want them to thrive. People are coming there and we want their families to be successful and happy. That matters. And so as we move forward in council, and if I have the opportunity, which I deeply want to serve the MDF Tabor, the relationship with our partners, irrigation, businesses, and more so each resident, it does matter what is happening. And we have to continue to find fiscal ways because there's no one who has extra money. There's no grader that's getting cheaper. There's no staff who are willing to work for less. These are great people. They should be respected. So doing things like the four on, four off, longer days, we hope entices people to the MD. We have found thrifty ways to do things. We used to have 12 managers, now we have three. So we have changed how we've done things at the MD. And I ask for your support so that we continue to grow the MDF Tabor and work at our region because there's going to be great and amazing things happening here. We live in the best place in the world and the opportunities are endless right now.
Thank you. Ben.
Well, going back to the Eastland, I would like to know why council pushed this 24 sections of irrigated land through just before, a day after nominations. And it's federating the next generation of council. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. There's a lot of things that are happening in the MD. They're pitting people against people, ranchers against farmers. It's not a healthy situation. And I hope if elected, I can help fix this problem.
Thank you. And Brian, or sorry, David, sorry, my apologies.
No trouble. Well, I definitely acknowledge that I don't know enough. I've been busy doing a lot of other things, but I am absolutely committed, if I am elected, to learn and understand these issues. And if there are some things And if there are some things that need to be changed related to these lease issues, I think we can push for those changes. If there, if it's all been above board and according to the rules, then we'll move forward the way it is because it's, it's done. But I think I'm willing to look at that, but that isn't my main focus. My main focus is trying to capitalize on this amazing place that we live and the beautiful people that live here, and try to make sure that everybody feels like they're treated fairly and that they're listened to, and when they bring projects to council, that, that they are listened to and that they're given a chance because we want the development to happen here. I think there's gonna be an incredible need for affordable housing. For, even for the bigger farmers, if we had a play, we're short on housing for all of our workers. And so some of the developments that have been done, the lots are very, very expensive. I think we need to look at more multifamily dwellings even out in the, in the, in the hamlets so that we can, that we can bring more people in, that, that there's something that they can afford to live in. Because I either need to pay my people a hundred dollars an hour, or I need to find them more affordable housing. Because what we pay our workers is not anywhere near enough to afford a lot and a custom-built home, even just a very modest home, even out in the hamlets. And so it's a concern that I'm hoping to address.
Well, thank you. So that kind of concludes with where we're at. We're only twenty minutes behind, so I'm gonna chalk that up as a win. I want to say thank you very much to the councillors that have come out, said what you can, answered some really thoughtful questions that were posed to us from the community, so thank you. I will just say, remember that your voice matters on Election Day. We encourage everyone to get out there, cast your ballot. And that concludes our forum tonight. Thank you so much for coming up.